I am then going to call the meeting to order of the December meeting for the school board. And we will begin the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll call read, please.
Kathy Chason?
Here.
Liz Currie?
Here.
Lynda Deladuka?
Here.
Jill Evans?
Here.
Rebecca Graham?
Here.
Patrick Halliday?
Here.
Greg Jenkins? Erin Cranichvelt? Alan Matson?
Yes, here.
Bernie O'Rourke?
Here.
Keith Fieldberry?
Here.
Miriam Stoll?
Here.
Ben Truman?
Here.
Meredith Woodward King? Xander Longs?
Here.
Henry Prime?
Here.
Thank you.
So I guess the first item on the agenda would be an approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Chason, seconded by Halliday. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the agenda passes. As you know, at this point is the time we would have public comment. Public comment can come from anyone, including members of the school district who may want to comment on anything related to the schools at this time. It won't be a time at which the board will engage in debate, but we would welcome input from the public on any issue. Seemably a little quiet on the public front this evening.
Wait till next.
Yes, exactly. So I guess we would move on with the next item on the agenda, which is the board report, which I put a number of things on the agenda, but had a couple of other things I wanted to raise, and if other members have things they would like to speak on, would be a good time. First thing I'd like to say is that the teacher contract, which we ratified in September, has been fully signed off on both sides, by both sides, and finished, and is complete. I assume it will be on the website at some point, but there always is a process after the contract has been ratified to get the final details down, and that is done. And some of you I know have been approached by members of the Education Association. My understanding is that all the pay adjustments were made this week for the teachers. Just I know a number of us have been approached, and I thought I'd just follow up on that. The next thing is running for school board. I would just like to remind everybody that if you are, you know, thinking of, if you're out in the general public or at the table here, thinking of running for the school board, one of the important things that you need to do is get thirty signatures from residents of your particular ward. And these signatures need to be obtained by January twenty-seventh and need to be filed with City Hall. There are forms online on the city website in which you can get the form to get the signatures. And, you know, I do mention this because, I mean, every, currently, every year, there is one school board member who is elected from each ward who will be up for reelection. And, you know, I do know, having talked to folks, that, you know, while there's always seven open seats, I do know that there are good, at least three members of the board who have indicated they won't be running again. And so, you know, let's make sure we're getting out in the community. I am trying to set up some mornings, some times, just to try to take like my lunch hour or morning time between now and December twentieth, when I'm going to be away, and then again, the first week of January, to get to a number of different places in the city, just to try to reach out to people, just sit at places where people come through, whether it's restaurants, whether it's places like, you know, the Senior Center, the V and A, I've touched base with King Street, places where different members of the community are coming through, other than our usual, just places that we often touch, which are PTOs, and some of our neighborhood restaurants, things like that, I'm trying to reach out. So if other folks have any, you know, interest in joining me, I will probably be sending around what I hope is a schedule by the end of this week. And then if you could post it around, just so that people know if they want to find out more about running, that's something that we could do. Jill?
I would also mention that the Vermont School Board Association is hosting a free webinar on December seventeenth from six to seven for those who might consider running for school board.
Thank you. December seventeenth?
It's on their website, yep, but it's the seventeenth from six until seven.
That's good. I would, I will, I think that's something good for us to publicize in any fashion.
Yep. It's VTVSBA.org.
Okay. Lynda?
Also, the things on the website indicate that school board members have to get approval from a caucus. And that's not true. And they do not need to have that, that page filled out. I contacted City Hall in an attempt to have them take the school commissioner off there, and so far that hasn't happened.
Okay, yeah, and it's very specific city charter that we are not to be, in fact, endorsed.
And, and they, they said that it wasn't an error, and I said, well, how would school board members know that they did not, in fact, need to get approval from a caucus? And I have not heard an answer back. So I'm waiting. I think in a day or two, it'll probably come off. It's in parentheses underneath the, and that whole page, I don't believe they need to fill out. There's three pages. Just because caucuses are tonight at least, and if they thought they missed it, then they might think they couldn't run.
Okay. Make sure we'll speak to that in what we're doing. Anything else related to school board elections? Next thing I'd like to mention is keep, I actually, I'm gonna, January twenty-fifth, I sent a note this afternoon about this. Hal Colston has touched base with me, and on January twenty-fifth from nine to one.
Nine to two, maybe.
Okay, Hal told me this afternoon, nine to one.
Yeah, they were talking about a debriefing by your board afterwards, so it's up to you.
Okay. So let's say from nine to two will be the joint meeting with the Winuski School Board, hosted and led by folks related to Partnership for Change. And this is a day in which there will be a certain amount of board training, as well as interaction with the other board, as well as learning about Partnership for Change. And I guess what I wanted, and I promised Hal that I would do tonight, is take a rough show of hands of who, who is planning on being there the twenty-fifth for a count, because they're looking for numbers of roughly how many would be there. So of the eleven of us who are here tonight, I see pretty solidly ten hands, and you certainly, student members are invited as well, if you're thinking so. Okay, at least ten, and then I'll touch base with the other folks who aren't here. One other thing, I guess I didn't put in email today, but I guess I would ask, is if you have questions that you would like addressed on that day, please send them to me. Hal is putting together the, is putting together the schedule right now, and I think this would be the time if we would like to have some input about, you know, whatever the question might be, such as, you know, what events are going on in the schools related to Partnership for Change right now, or whatever your question might be. This would be a time for them to have it and to get addressed in it. You know, it might also be how to, you know, questions that relate to how do we work with Winuski as well. Anything else related to Partnership for Change, in particular, that particular event? Okay. Connecting over to Winuski, Winuski has just finished a boundary study that was requested by the Department of Education when they hired a new superintendent this past year. And we were at the table, I was at the table, and as was Jeannie, because they asked us to participate with Winuski. The boundary study has just gone to the Department of Education. I did, I actually, I thought Sean had, Sean, who is the superintendent at Winuski, had, I thought, hand, forwarded us a copy of what they sent, but he forwarded us a cop, a cover letter today. So I don't have copies, but I would like to get them out to the board, Winuski.
Can I work on that?
And they would, they should get out to the boards so that you can all see. The, this is a public document, right? The upshot of the board study is that Winuski is not looking to basically merge, okay? In the, in the boundary study, the statements made to the Department of Education were along the lines of Winuski really wants to maintain its own school district. And yet that there are ways that they would like to look for joint efforts between districts, in particular with us in Burlington. There, there was, there was, been some discussion about bringing in South Burlington as well to have some, be a part of this discussion. But right now it was just Winuski, and we were kind of at the table as, you know, weighing in, if they had questions about what might things look like with joint districts, there was a bunch of comparison work done between our two districts, things like that. But the recommendation coming out of this study would be that Winuski remains an independent district. Miriam?
I apologize if you said this.
Yeah.
I'm spacing out, but why was this undertaken? Did Winuski want to undertake it, or was that, they're told to do it?
State, now Jeannie, you might correct me if I get this incorrect, but basically, when they went out to hire a new superintendent, that kind of
Triggers a.
triggers an event where the state can say, you should do a boundary study to see if possibly there should be a consolidation merger or something like that. And that was triggered, so they got asked by the state to do it, and I can't remember, did the state ask us to join in the conversation?
Winuski asked us.
And Winuski, so Winuski asked us.
Although the state encouraged us.
Yeah. To say, okay, they're a boundary, they're on your boundary, it would be great to have Burlington there. And so it really was a report for Winuski. And, you know, so we weren't there saying, oh, we think you should do this, we think you shouldn't do this, we were there to help provide information. And that was our role at that point. If there had been a further recommendation, then we would have taken a deeper role. There probably will be follow-up on that, though, if I remember right. This is, it's kind of a two-part process that the Department of Education will come back. So this, there will be, there will be additional on this, probably, I think they're supposed to finish by May or June with the whole process.
One more question on that.
Yeah.
Do you know why they didn't want to? I mean, do you think it's curious? Like, I would have thought that they would be interested in it. Do they, they look at us as like, you know?
No, I think, you know, my understanding is Winuski still has a very strong feeling that we are a community, and we want our, you know, we want a school that reflects our community. They understand the struggles they have. When you look at some of the struggles we have with, you know, having to build new curriculum, having a, you know, they've got a declining population, even, even as ours has been increasing. They have a smaller school, which has created, you know, higher percentages of kids who are ELL students, for example. And all these things, they recognize the difficulties, but they still feel very strongly that Winuski as a community would like to maintain its identity with a school.
Is there any chance the state would make them do it?
No. The state doesn't actually, by statute, have authority to make them do it. In order for a consolidation to occur, both towns would have to vote on it, and both towns would have to pass it. In some of the supervisory unions around the state that have looked at consolidation, it's just you, Ellen, I'll take it. The, if one town in an SU votes no, the whole thing's down. So the state doesn't have authority to make it happen.
Any other questions related to this? And the final thing that I just want to say now, and will come up again, I just want to remind the community that we will be holding budget hearings on December sixteenth, which is next Monday, and December nineteenth, which is next Thursday, seven o'clock here at Burlington High School in the cafeteria, the same room we're in right now. December, Monday, at seven o'clock?
This coming Monday?
Yep. And this coming Thursday, so it'll be, and not this coming Thursday, but next Thursday, the nineteenth. The sixteenth and the nineteenth, seven PM. Couple of things I just would like to say. I, you know, I think it's important that as many of us as can make the meetings. I unfortunately will not be able to make Monday night. I have to be out of town for business. But we'll be here on the nineteenth. I think this is a time when we hope to get a certain amount of community input. The number, the amount of input we get seems to vary from year to year. On the, my time on the board, we've had years where we've spent three, four hours listening to community input. And we had one year where we had three or four people both nights, with three, you know, very, very small amount of input. So it does vary from year to year.
Yeah, and also there are so many school events at this time of year, like there's the EMS course concert on
Yeah, on Monday.
Monday.
Yep.
So it's always tricky for the board and for the public.
Right. So I guess, you know, as a board member too, making at least one of these, you know, in both if you can. Anything else, anyone else would like to, oh, redistricting, Miriam?
I just want more question on the forums.
Yeah.
The finance committee is running it, so if we just go, we're just there to listen?
Primarily there to listen, yes.
And the finance committee organizing it and running it, there'll be a presentation?
Yeah, there'll be a, usually a ten-minute or five to ten-minute presentation upfront. At times it's been run by board chair, at times finance. I think probably between, you know, Keith, myself, and some of the administration will put together, coming out of tonight also with input that we hear from the board as to the presentation.
But the whole board will sit here and listen, or?
Yeah, it's kind of what we do is, yeah. I'm sorry, what was that, Miriam?
You're saying if you're not on the finance committee, do you sit somewhere else, or do you sit?
No, we often just sit up here as the board.
It's a board hearing.
It's a board hearing, yeah.
All right. And then how do we capture, do we capture verbatim what everyone says, or we capture generalities?
Pretty close, pretty close to verbatim. Pretty close.
I'll just say personally, I typically kept my notes and refer to mine, but, you know, I know we do have official notes that are kept. For those who, who didn't quite see everything, I just would like to point out that last night at the city council, the city council sent back to the Charter Change Committee redistricting, at which point the city council asked the Charter Change Committee to change the, our school board recommendation to the same as the city council for grade twelve. I just reiterated to Charter Change Committee today, it's still a recommendation, if, we're only in a recommendation position. But that, you know, they're the ones who, you know, will put it on the ballot. So that is where that stands at this point. I think that's all I have from the board front. Does anyone else have comments? Any events, school events, any other things to note?
Is this a time to talk about the inviting legislators to, or would you rather do it when I?
I want you to add advocacy.
Okay.
There are four, no, five, there's a VHS student as well, there are five students who participated in the, in the district, participating in the Opus music composition, who just got their pieces accepted and will be performing, having them performed by professional musicians in January and at St. Mike's. Two from, one from Champlain, three from Edmonds, and one from VHS, I believe. I may have forgotten some.
Thank you. Jill?
Sorry, I don't have the teacher's name, but today there was the second Greater Burlington area women's forum. The second lunch of that new network, and there was an Edmonds teacher who brought three students from middle school. That was very cool.
Yes.
Shout out to that teacher.
I can make guesses who probably might have been, but I don't have, no, I don't really have an idea. Miriam and then Keith?
I don't know quite what to say, but I just think that we should acknowledge, acknowledge Nelson Mandela's passing, and how amazing his legacy is, and how that's really in my heart, and I hope in the district's, seems like it is. That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Keith? The Intervene Arts Academy every year has, the last several years, has had a wonderful activity, I don't know what it's called, fill the bowl or whatever, but it's a, but it's a great activity. I would recommend go and get a, get a bowl, made by the students or not, but and have it filled with soup, and it's a great activity. It's Thursday night, and I think it starts somewhere around five-thirty, quarter to six, and it's just a great activity. Kind of gives the idea of the developing world, the poor, the poorer parts of our country and other parts of the world, where a bowl of soup is about all they have sometimes for a day.
And that's Thursday?
That's Thursday this week at I A.
Six o'clock. That appears to wrap up the board report. Jeannie?
Since we're doing announcements, I thought, and since we have RTN here, although I guess it's not RTN, sorry, but Channel Seventeen is having their holiday party Thursday, and they have been a big supporter of us through our commissioners' corner. So I just thought I'd mention that. It's open and available to all of you.
Can I just mention that, I don't know if any of you noticed this, but when we had the commissioners' corner with Bonnie Acker and Brian Williams and Bobby Riley, Channel said, Rob let my son run the cameras when he was only eight years old. So if you notice, the camera's kind of going all over the place. I thought that was really neat that he and then there were other kids from I A in the audience, so they got to experience it.
That's really cool. Thanks. Diversity and Equity update. We, I mentioned in my Superintendent Weekly update that our diversity, equity, community partnerships, We All Belong, that department plus our We All Belong members, including Kathy Chason, participated Friday in a coaching session with Sherwood Smith as part of the We All Belong group, specifically focused around resistance. And we've also been having conversations with Sam Hoffer of Washington Consulting about doing kind of a two-point-oh training next, again, around resistance and how to help people with moving forward around issues of equity and race. We have, you know, it hasn't, it doesn't seem like it's been that long since I've talked to you, and I, I just updated the report, I guess, for Diversity Equity Committee, but I don't have it with me. Most of what's been happening most recently is some work around some harassment complaints or potential harassment complaints within the district. Sparks has been very busy helping our diversity, equity employees deal with, with a few complaints around the district. And still hearing that people aren't quite sure what that means, what it means to make a complaint, how to make a complaint, still having trouble explaining the process and what's happening. So we're, we're working with that, we're struggling with that. I don't mean people internally, but I do, actually. So an employee internally, or an external parent or community member, not quite sure how to make that complaint, or what happens once they do, or realizing that using certain words is going to trigger a complaint, and then saying, well, that's not what I meant, it's not really, you know, that kind of stuff. So we're, we're collecting some data on this and trying to figure out better ways of communicating that. Also continuing quite a bit of work with our New American community. Lynda Wosleben will be bringing the updated ELL strategic plan to the Diversity Equity Committee next week. And any questions on diversity and equity? I think that's on recording on tonight.
Did you mention that first Equity Report Card Advisory Committee meeting?
I didn't mention. What day is it?
It's Thursday.
Thank you. I knew that we appointed the Equity Advisory Committee, and this is on it, and the first meeting is Thursday. Also, I'm glad to know that, because we had a conversation today about the last, I didn't realize it was Thursday, but about the last, the attempt at climate survey. And we had given that survey over to K-12 Insight, who does surveying as, you know, as their business. And they have given us back several recommendations, and so I'd real, and we're getting that back tomorrow as a draft. So I'd really like, I'll have to find out, I'd really like that committee to be looking at that, and then Rebecca, I'd love to bring it to your committee next week, because if we can finalize it by December twentieth, we can put it out in January. If we can't finalize it by December twentieth, we'll delay it, and we'll talk about that in your committee. Thanks, Liz.
Liz, where is that meeting going to be?
Ira Allen, five-thirty.
Okay. Okay.
Partnership for Change update? Oh, Meredith?
Did anyone on the board or anyone in the district attend up in at St. Paul's that was with the New Americans? Wasn't there one the last month?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I didn't know, I wasn't able to go.
Yeah, no, all of us, it, it was a follow-up action.
Yeah.
Parent meeting. It was, it was actually great, and you can read about it on our website, you can read about it on their website, Parents for Change. You can read about it in the Free Press. It was an opportunity to demonstrate the progress that we've made since last November's commitments. And we have made significant progress primarily in the area of the report card that the parents wanted, as well as additional orientations and trainings for our multilingual liaisons around what school is in America or in Vermont, and how to help parents navigate that process. And then we recommitted to the, to continue to work with the parents around the needs of our New American students within the schools. It was a very positive event. Yeah. Thanks. Okay. Partnership for Change, I mentioned last time we met that on November second, we had over a hundred people participating in a community learning conversation. And you can read that around on the Partnership for Change BT.org website. We have had, we have had a few meetings so far about ELL pathways for students, specifically about some of our New American students who perhaps arrive at high school pretty late in their career without having had much education, or not having enough time for their English to become fluent before they have enough credits to graduate. So they're not quite ready for high school. And we've been meeting with Community College of Vermont, Vermont Adult Learning, Winuski School District, us, the Agency of Education, around what possibilities might exist. And we're continuing to meet. We have about, United Way has also brought us together. What we want to try to figure out is if there is a way that we could develop a fifth-year or even six-year bridge program so students could get some intensive skill building for college or career. How do we sustain that if we do that? How is it funded? Those are the issues that we're trying to, to delve into. So there's another meeting about that coming up later this week. Next week, we are meeting with, oh, Miriam?
So when you say that, it makes me think about special education. We have a commitment to those children to educate them until they're twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-second birthday.
So I just wanted to offer up, I mean, perhaps that's a good sort of place to look for ideas, is to talk to people and the folks that are doing extended education plans and transition plans for that population.
Right, and we are some of those folks who do those extended education plans. And in special education, and it's, it's very student-focused, individually-focused, more often than not, around the age of nineteen, maybe twenty, we're connecting those kids with Volk Rehab, and we're providing support, and Volk Rehab is providing support, and it's really about life skills. It's not quite the same with these folks. It's really about how can we, these are kids who are eligible for a high school diploma, but once they get a high school diploma, they're no longer eligible for public education funding. If they tap into post-secondary funding too soon, they're going to use it up or use it much quicker, and they won't necessarily have it to see them way through college. Is there something we can do that gets them on a college campus, like Community College of Vermont or Burlington College, that however is really providing non-credit-bearing intensive courses? So it's, it's a little different, but
It's not that different, though. I mean, I would argue there's probably an overlap there, and there might be an opportunity for some of the special education kids who are college-bound but need that extra support too. And there might also be just a way to save some money by looking at the two programs and bringing them together instead of reinventing a second program when we already are, we already think about that for one particular case.
Liz?
Well, I just think it's important to be aware that already there's a somewhat of a weakness in the system that or a bias in the system that sometimes mislabels kids from other countries as special ed when they're not. And so I think until the district has a better understanding of that, it would be risky to combine the two, because that bias is kind of inherent already, and we're trying to work on, on doing that bias.
But actually, here in Burlington, unlike the rest of the United States, which over-represents some of those kids in special ed, we actually under-represent, because we go so far as that sometimes I think we miss out on some kids. A lot of the kids who are coming from war-torn countries really have experienced a lot of trauma, which affects their cognitive development, and their energy level, and their, their ability to sort of control and monitor their behaviors. And so my concern actually, I understand what you're saying, but in reality, I think sometimes we do not, that's part of the reason that we end up with, with kids at the other end, because we're afraid to look for those disabilities, because we don't want to label them too quickly.
I think it'd be a great thing to look for DAPA on.
I would, I would love to see someone take that on as, as sort of that combination. So how can we make sure that we're not making type A or type one or type two errors? You know, we need to be getting the most people on the right track. So, yeah, I'd love to look on that, yeah.
And actually, from identification, it's incredibly difficult thing, especially when you're dealing with kids that may not have had literacy in L1, that may not have had literacy in L-1, that they've never been introduced to school, to, to identify even in a, you know, a high school-age student who's been in the district for several years, what might be just because of, of, of late, early onset or late initial literacy and what might be an actual, like, literary reading disability. It's incredibly complicated, and, um...
And we don't have good tests.
And we don't have, no one has good measures for it, and, um, and to parse those out are, are very, very difficult things, so. Some proof of thought? Jeanne?
Continue.
Yeah.
Um, so communication surveys, um, as many of you know, Youth Catalitics did a communications audit, uh, for Burlington and for Winuski around how parents receive information from the schools and connect with the schools. Um, while the majority of it was very positive, there are some recommendations for improvement, and we're holding a meeting with Youth Catalitics next week to kind of delve into it. What do we do with this information? Where might we start, and how do we make sure that people who need to hear it are hearing it?
And this is the survey that was presented at, um, it was a Partnership for Change-related event? Was that the one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Actually, the lead community partner update, Meredith, is kind of reflecting what you were saying. The New American Parent Group, Parents for Change, is refocusing after the action meeting to determine where they should go next with the work that has been done. A new group of families facing economic hardships is looking at how middle school kids are identifying goals and interests, and how kids are going into high school with a sense of engagement. That's a new group that is formed under Partnership for Change, and that group has met with both middle school principals so far, so that's a, that's something that's moving forward according to the process that's lined up. We are, it's time for us to revisit our logic model and start thinking about applying for the second three years of the grant. And so we have started to work, um, Amy and I, and then at Winuski, Sean and Leon, Principal Superintendent, um, and Hal Colston, and, um, Lindsay and I have started working, revisiting the vision of Partnership for Change. That'll be some of the work we're bringing to you at the January 25th meeting, but that work is underway. Some upcoming, um, meetings, uh, we talked about the school board retreat. We're trying to bring Adam Rovansky back February 3rd to 5th, um, and we're try, we'd like to have some conversations with the two chairs about how, ways to connect students with the school boards. Winuski also has student reps as we do, but the idea of bringing, having students present at the school boards for five to 10 minutes about student-centered learning, I think these are things that we can discuss at the retreat and figure out how best to do that, to bring it in front of the boards, so that the whole board is aware of what it is, as well as the community. Questions on Partnership for Change?
I have, um, one thing that, until I'd seen it recently, the logic model, I think that might be something good to circulate back to the board for us to see what it is. Until I'd actually seen the logic model recently, I'd forgotten exactly how big that document is and what you're revisiting. What is the timing for getting that done? I thought it was actually prior to our January 25th meeting.
Um, January 16th.
Okay.
The logic model revision is due. You're correct.
Okay, yeah.
Good memory.
And another question I had related to, I guess, is Partnership for Change. The state has passed basically a law saying we need to have personal learning plans.
Correct, and we need to have multiple pathways to college.
And multiple pathways, right.
Or multiple pathways to graduation, I mean.
Right, and, um, I guess I'd kind of, where is the state on that? Are they providing any kind of guidance? Is it fitting in with Partnership for Change?
Yeah.
How are we connecting with what is now becoming the state regulation?
So the state, the state is requiring personal learning plans for students in seventh through 12th grade and multiple pathways to graduation.
By school year which?
Two thou, the end of 2015, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, or school year 2015. So the state currently has underway a, um, committee, ad hoc committee of different representatives looking at providing guidance. So the state is writing a guide on this. It's not yet written. Um, interestingly enough, they're watching very closely what we're doing in Burlington and Winuski in Partnership for Change, and Daniel Barron, um, our consultant, our, bad word, our critical friend from Bay and Paul Foundation, and Jane Feinberg, who works, who's the communications person provided by Nellie May, are both now, um, working with the state on this. So it's very connected. I think that we'll be leading the way, um, with the work that we're doing. It's, it's really very exciting stuff that, um, we're headed in the right direction, and we're bringing others along with us, and the state has, the state legislature, as well as the State Agency of Education, has also signed on to that direction. Kathy?
At the steering committee, we asked Partnership to provide us talking points with what the state is doing.
Yes.
That should be...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear the question.
Kathy said, at the steering committee, at the Partnership for Change Steering Committee, they had asked for Partnership for Change Administration to provide them, um, talking points about what's going on at the state level.
Great.
Okay. Um...
Yes, I'm done.
Enrollment up, go ahead. Enrollment update, our enrollment is holding steady. We kind of capped at about sixteen forty, or four thousand forty-seven, and we're right in the four thousand forty-five, four thousand fifty-two range still, so we're holding steady as the school year goes on. We are, we have open kindergarten registration, but we're posting new forms, and Paul, is the online system going live in January for registration? Or not yet?
Probably not.
Okay, so our new forms will be posted, though, right after the break, and we're working towards an online registration system, but we're not... Come on, quick, Kathy. Okay. Um, and just to make it clear, if there are any almost-kindergarten parents out there, um, it is not first come, first served. Anytime that you register before the closing date in mid-March, you will be considered. After the closing date in mid-March, then it's first come, first served consideration at the next time, next time we do it. Then we notice, that's when the date of registration makes a difference, after the initial closing date. In this first spread, we just follow our process, no matter whether you registered in September or you register on the evening of March 12th. Okay. And administrative searches, we have three that we're starting right now. The Hunt Middle School search has been posted on School Spring. We, I mentioned last time that we're following a number of different, um, recruiting tools as well, reaching out to, um, Teachers of Color Magazine and, um, H, I just forgot. It, uh, historically, black colleges and universities, HBCUs, that we've connected with, and it's a nation, nationwide search. We also are about to start the search on, um, the assistant principals at Burlington High School and on the ELL director because that was a two-year interim position, and so that search is beginning. Both, all of those are going to be external, um, national searches. And Nikki is leading them all. That's it.
Any further questions at this point for Jeanne, and these are any other issues? Um...
We, we had agreed, the way that the positions, the interim positions were set, that those, anyone in interim could apply for the permanent position if they so chose, is that for all three of those that you discussed?
Yes, that's correct.
Have we taken further thought about if we want to change that model moving forward, or?
That a person could apply? No, yes, we have talked about it, and it's really complicated.
I know.
Because you don't find people just sitting around waiting to keep, keep the work of the district moving forward in a leadership position all the time.
Yeah, right.
Who aren't going to apply. So anyway, we're having those conversations. We don't have a final. But those three people, four people, were told when they got the job before we started having this conversation that they are eligible to apply.
Jill?
I was just going to say to Patrick that Nikki's been, um, pretty forthright in her concerns about that practice, and so...
Yeah, yeah. But it's also realistic. I mean, who's going to want to leave their job and do without the, you know, the promise of this being something? Yeah, I, I see both sides of that. I just didn't know where the, the conversation stood.
Any other questions, comments? Move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Um, begin by entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda, key, seconded by Commissioner Truman. Um, are there any items that anyone needs to remove from the consent agenda? And I guess, as far as the consent agenda and not necessarily the minutes, is the version that's online, the current, the most current? Um, I see paper. I didn't see a copy of that.
Oh, sorry, Alan.
Yeah, sorry.
It did go to others.
Okay.
Alan, could I ask just a question of clarification?
Yeah.
Do I understand what I'm going on?
Yeah, sorry.
Um, S T S, senior step, status, can someone just tell me what that means? Because there seems to be no money associated with it, so I wasn't sure what it was. What does that mean?
Yeah, Jeanne, can you?
Yeah.
Oops. Uh, Rich Castine is senior steps, senior steps status.
Senior step, that means in, in Burlington contract, used to be in the state, but the state has eliminated it, but the Burlington contract still says that if you are in your final year and you've worked so many years in the district, you can do a senior step project for, to earn, um, some of your sick time paid back. It's, it's in the Burlington contract.
So he's doing some extra work?
Yes. It has, it has to be a plan that's approved by administration.
Okay, and, but he's still teaching?
Yes.
But then, shouldn't there be money, like, what, whatever we're paying him to do that? Shouldn't that be on here somewhere?
Um, I don't know, Sarah Jane, are you able to answer that?
It's sick money you've already paid for.
You haven't already paid him. He's still employed by us.
No, but I mean, that, that's not an extra, budget-wise, haven't you already accounted for that?
It is if it's on top of his forty hours.
Yes. I'm confused by the question. He isn't paid for this project until June.
Right.
He has this year to complete the project. He has already earned the sick days.
Right.
But he gets...
And he's going to get the money in lieu of sick days, right.
Right.
But the state is not going to give...
But the state no longer acknowledges that in the retirement system.
Right.
So sometime when we pay him the money, we would see what we paid him?
Yes. Sarah Jane, can you speak to how we pay? The question is, do we show what we pay?
Show it where?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just...
Can we report out how much somebody receives in sick time in their senior step?
It depends upon how much sick time you have. Um, it's... It's, um, usually, it's twenty-five percent of sick time that they have available. In most cases, our teachers have a full year's worth of sick time, so it works out to be twenty-five percent of their annual salary for their last year.
Okay. So we're not, so we are not accruing that expense now. We accrue it when he finishes the project.
Right.
And that's when we would see the money in the budget. That's why there's no money here.
It would, it would be under the, it's incurred this fiscal year.
It does not go back on this piece of paper for you. No. We don't put it back on here again. Tonight, we're just simply approving the fact that he's on senior step. We don't really have a choice about that, and that he's retiring. Contractually, you really don't have a choice about that. I don't know, I mean, your question is how much is his senior step? I'm not sure that we actually, um, figure that until later in the year.
No, my question was just, I wanted to understand what I was approving in this consent agenda.
So you're approving that you have one teacher on senior step?
So I'm, I'm good now, and so, thank you.
Liz?
Um, the minutes on November 12th?
For?
The board minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, should I take it, ask to have it be taken off the agenda or just ask the question?
Is, is it reasonably substantive? If it is, then it probably should just be pulled.
I don't know.
Okay. Well, go ahead, yeah, go ahead and ask.
Um, there's a statement that says, under real estate update, the board is comfortable with the TAF lease. Did the board actually make that statement collectively?
I don't recall that we officially said anything, no.
I've never seen the TAF lease.
Yeah. Um, I think what was stated was that the, that the, um, I, I don't necessarily know it was the board. I mean, I know it was the administration who was working on the lease.
So can we take these minutes off the agenda and have that corrected, please?
That might be easy to correct.
Where is it?
At C real estate update, at the board report.
Oh, the board report? Yeah?
Is it a committee of the board?
The, you know, it was the status of the TAF lease, and I'm sure I was the one who made the report. The intent should have been that the school district and, you know, with, under advice, the, the version of the lease that we presented to, um, U V M meets the, you know, whatever cri, you know, the criteria of being a valid lease that could be, um, that could be entered into because there are the restrictions from the prior court rulings. So, you know, if the statement was made that the board is comfortable, I guess it would have to be that, you know, that it fits within those criteria, you know, we, you know, we haven't...
So the board wouldn't have to act on it or anything?
I wouldn't, I mean, we had, yeah, not really.
Right, they didn't act on anything. But it could be, may I?
Yeah.
It could be revised to say the board is comfortable with the terms of the TAF lease to date.
Yeah, I just don't know what's appropriate, whether it's appropriate that the committee, that the board members working on it are speaking for the board and that's appropriate. I just don't know. I just have the question. If we're, if we, if the rest of the board doesn't have to act on it and your process is compensatic, then I was just asking as a point of clarification, really.
Yeah, it's, I mean, at this point, it's not something would be the, the board action because the board had authorized the district to enter into a valid lease, valid TAF lease. What I would just say is, you know, it, it seems to me that you, that your concern is that there's some sort of board action implied in that statement.
It, it seems so, but if, you know, it's more of a question than I think.
I mean, I can certainly, like I said, I'm the one who made the statement. And, you know, the, certainly the intent is, the city is not, the city is not prepared to agree to cer, the distinction was, there are terms in the lease that the city is not, is not comfortable agreeing to, and they had to do with taxes, and...
But this just says the city's removing the language. That may have happened since. I'm just, I'm just asking about what, if this reflects an appropriate process, that's all. If it does, it does. I'm just...
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that it does because I think it's part of what we have been doing.
Okay.
We accepted the TAF lease.
Yeah.
I mean, the administration might have accepted the lease. I can't, I wouldn't say the board has accepted the lease because I don't know if that, we have the authority to accept the lease.
So, yeah, I mean, in the end, I don't think any kind of board action is implied in this. I don't think that there's, so, you know, unless that was something you weren't comfortable with.
Will we ever be boning on the TAF lease as a board?
Um, as far as individual transactions, af, you know, if you remember right, what we had said was, you know, under the original terms of the group of transactions entering into them, um, you know, we did not say that, as far as the lease and who binds us on a lease, um, I guess I would need clarification on that. Even for something like that, I think that there's a city, there's obviously a city approval also because there were terms in that lease that they need to approve. I guess maybe I'll just have to look to ask, you know, the following question, who would actually bind the, you know, bind the district? But, um, you know, I'm thinking through a few different leases that we have in, in place, and the board has reapproved them when they've been annualized, like the parking, for example, the TAF, yeah. So, um, you know, we need clarification.
So maybe Jeanne's language of "to date" would make sense, given that we might have to approve it, so...
I'm, I mean, I'm comfortable with that as reflecting what I said.
Okay.
If you want to switch that. Just "to date" in C sixty?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for particular? Did you want clarification?
Do I have to make a note of that, or is that Jean's?
Yeah, I would just say in, um...
You should make a note in the minutes, yeah.
Yes, yes. So it would be the board...
Under board minutes, yeah, I, I know, I just...
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments on items related to the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent, consent agenda, say... Seeing none, all in favor of the consent, consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, motion carries. I, I have one following question that really wasn't part of the debate. For the senior step status, which have a financial implication, as Miriam was pointing out, when do teachers need to notify us by if they're going to take senior step status?
Sarah Jane?
It's, um, it's in the contract. And it's, if they want to do the senior step status, that entails a project. And what happens is, if they do the project, then the in, the, the bonus is added to their salary throughout the year. They're supposed to tell us by May third of the previous year. But because of the change in the state retirement decisions, we haven't been getting senior projects, because they're gonna get the same amount of money in a lump sum in June anyway.
Ah, okay, and that's because of the existing grandfathered golden handcuffs?
Handshake.
Handshake. Sorry. Freudian slips.
I, I don't understand by what you mean by grandfathers.
Well, remember, we have changed, we have changed for the, we have changed the condition for employees who've come in after a certain date as to what they get related to their, right. Okay, so this changes nothing as to what a retiring employee gets actually in, in.
In the foreseeable future now.
Okay, excellent. Oh, Keith and then Linda.
My question, is he retiring at the end of this year?
Yes.
Linda.
What hap- just a quick preview. What happened was that there were a lot of people who were adding a lot to their pension in the last year, and that actuarially became unsustainable, sustainable. And that's why it's been dropped off the state, um, deal. You can, if you make l- less than ten percent of a raise in your last year, in other words, you got a raise, maybe did football coaching or something, will still accept it, but not when it gets up as high as a senior step.
Okay. Anything else? I guess then we would move on to.
Wait, do we vote?
Yes, we did.
Oh, good, I missed it.
Yeah, I made my comment after, cause I had to go through.
Oh, that's right, you did.
After, I was. So we'd now move on to the committee reports, we'll begin with the planning committee. You know, the quick report is, first thing is, we did recreate the agenda for this evening, but also, um, we were to bring forth a motion on the budget proposal. And, um, as chair, often I bring the motions forward, but I would, you know, as chairing the meeting, I'm not supposed to bring mo- motions forward. Can some, would someone from the planning committee, Keith, wanna make the motion that we?
To present the budget?
Yeah.
Do, a motion to present a budget proposal for discussion based upon the financial goal of a six point nine percent education spending increase, with more detail on how this budget meets the identified priorities.
Is there a second? And Kathy's second, so. Keith, would you wanna speak to the motion? And I guess one thing that I think would be important to the board to hear is why we put in the end about how the budget meets the identified priorities?
Okay.
Can I ask a question of clarification first? So present it to who, present it to the public?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
This, this is a budget in progress. This is, we're kind of on new territory, we've never done it this week before. It's in the works, in progress. And what you're getting tonight is sort of an outline of, of, uh, the information that we've, we've received through the surveys and from the board, uh, board committees and, um, administration, and how, how sort of the administration looked at the, um, the finance committee's goal of six point nine percent as for the pre-equalized stu- uh, student cost, see if they can get to that figure. So you've got kind of an outline of what that looks like. It's not done, and we're, we're going to be meeting tomorrow afternoon to put together a kind of a more concise, kind of like, a more, I think, detailed information than you have tonight, so that for the public to see, basically some of the bigger functions of the school district, okay? And whatever else comes out tonight. This is an initial presentation of a, of a budget that's in progress, of being developed. And we're asking the community to help us, uh, look at, look at the functions and the programs of our, our school, our school district, talk about what they feel, whether, what they feel they can afford, what items they feel that we need to maybe improve on, and what items we maybe cannot afford at this time. And that's what we're asking people to talk to at our hearings on Monday and Thursday of next week.
Can I, can I ask for a?
Miriam. Yeah.
A clarification, and I apologize, I know that this was done, talked about prior, but can you quickly summarize the rationale for the six point nine percent? Why, why that, is where we ended up?
Okay, if you look at, uh, if you look at over our last couple of years, we were at the eight percent, okay? And we're still increasing in s- in student enrollment. And the student enrollment is going up, um, but the new students that we're receiving are, are more, need more resources to be able to succeed in our district, so we have additional costs there. And we were looking at that, we were looking at that, we were looking at the cost of ma- maintaining, you know, our programs as we had, okay? And paying off, uh, what we incurred as a deficit in fiscal twelve. And it looked like if we came in at six point nine, we could, we could pretty much do that, there would, and, um, there will be need for re- you know, looking at the budget reductions in certain areas to improve in other areas, so. That's what's gonna happen, there'll be a change, a lot of it, there'll be quite a bit of change. And I think the, uh, I think in the chart that you have on the various areas that were brought forward by the various program committee, you see the rationale why we needed those and what the, what is gonna be done with the reductions.
And where would that six point nine put us in comparison to, I know it, we're usually at eight, but how about comparison to other districts in the last couple of years?
We're thinking that we're gonna be right in the mix, in the middle, from what, from our initial, remember, we had been low on the per pupil cost.
Right.
Up until this point. And from the information that we got from our business manager at going to statewide meetings, it looked like we were gonna be pretty much in the middle, in the mix here.
Like the six point nine?
But we, what makes us exceptional is that we are growing in, in our stu- in our students and in our, our pre-equalized, in our equalized student count. We're growing in both of those areas, which is unusual in most of the state, okay?
And what's the status of that issue about getting reimbursed more for kids who are high resource need cases?
We are continuing to lobby, we, uh, Alan and I were at a meeting with the finance, the senate finance committee of, talking about that need, and we were, uh, we were, we were supported by other members that were there from other districts that don't have the numbers of students, and they talked to, to the fact that the resources needed by districts who had students who were, uh, who came to us from other countries with, without the English language, the need for greater resources.
And, but that wouldn't go into effect next year, even if you were successful in lobbying it?
Or you could?
We never know what the legislature's going to do, we're just, we just.
Is it possible it could go into effect next year?
We have a very strong advocate in the education committee, in the representative Donovan from our city. So, who kno- we're not sure. But we certainly worked hard last year, and we're continuing to work hard. And Senator, Senator Ash is chairman of the senate finance committee, and he's very aware of the situation.
But in theory, if we did that, then perhaps that would reduce the six point nine percent that we would need. If we were getting reimbursed greater, then maybe we could get away with five percent. In theory.
In theory. Yeah, this is all pers- this is all based upon, uh, our best information.
I understand, I'm asking the question, cause we're being asked to vote on six point nine percent, and I'm trying to get a real.
Yeah.
If, if one of my constituents say, why six point nine percent? And, and I give them some of the things you said, including that some of our, we're growing and that our students, some of them take, need more resus- resources in order to succeed, and then they bring up this issue, I wanna make sure that I am up on it.
Right, I understand, yeah.
So, so it's possible.
It's possible.
I would just actually like to clarify, yes, that if the, if they did change the formula as far as a student who's receiving some type of services, and we'll use ELL services at this point, get a higher multiplier to become an equalized student, then yes, that would actually increase the amount of revenue coming from the state, and would possibly reduce the amount that we would have to increase the bottom line number, yes.
Thank you. And when, if it were gonna happen, when would we know?
I mean, they could be passing something as late as April, which would be well after our vote. You know, so if they did something for, which would be extremely fast for the district, uh, for Montpelier, as far as I could tell, um, we wouldn't know until after the vote.
I would say realistically, May, maybe, and probably not for this year. If they did it, it would be.
Not for this year, next year.
For ne- next year, it would be.
Meredith?
Just no one legislated.
Oh, just, one second, did it? What?
Point of information.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Uh, in my eleven years as business manager, I have never seen the equalized pupil count change after it's frozen in the middle of January. I've seen the base tax rate change, I've seen the base education amount change by the legislation, but I've never seen them change the equalized pupil count. So that's where the ELL influence would come into the equalized pupil count. They may change other things, but I've never seen them change that. Doesn't mean they won't, but I never know.
Right, so that would indicate it'd be highly unlikely they would change it for the, for, yeah, for, for fiscal fifteen. Meredith?
I just wondered if, um, we have a relationship with Winuski, of course, partnership for change, but have you talked to Berry's Refugee Resort?
It's the same. Oh, you mean to.
Are we, are we lobbying with them?
Are you talking to Winuski and Berry's, so that they also are approaching the legislative?
You did.
Yeah, we brought it up at the, um, state school board association meeting. Kathy and I brought up a, um, a, I guess it was a recommendation, or we asked for some. It didn't fly this year, um, but that doesn't mean that it isn't gonna happen, and that, it'll come up again when we get into the advocacy stuff. I haven't contacted people in Montpelier, but I have people in Winuski, I'm not Montpelier Berry. There, I don't know how big an issue it is there compared to Winuski and Burlington. But the rest of, the, the problem becomes, there's X amount of money in the pot, and if everybody else agrees that we need more, they may end up with less. And their numbers are going down, and their expenses are staying steady. So it, it becomes a real political thing. That's why I'm, I have to agree with David, it may happen, but I think it's gonna take some groundwork to get it to that point, so people understand, we started that process. But nothing moves that quickly.
Patrick?
I have a question, so I'll just start with one. One, um, I would love to see, like, hard data broken down by percentage of students, um, in the district who were state equalized students in ten versus percentage of students in fifteen in fiscal year, ten versus fiscal year fifteen. I'm hearing that it's growing, and I don't doubt that, but I wanna see, uh, what rate it's growing, you know, that would be really helpful if you could, to inform that, and so.
Enrollment data?
What's that?
Enrollment data?
Does enrollment data break it down by, by, not, not. What I hear is that the, 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 it's not just that we're growing, but the, the, our growth that we're seeing is, um, has a skew towards students who are more expensive to educate.
Sure. So our poverty, how our poverty rate has changed, how our ELL numbers have changed?
Poverty rate. That, that's right. And so, you know, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, I live in the South End, I'm looking at Champlain. Champlain is a school that is growing, and it's not growing based down at the same rate as other parts of Burlington too, but it's also growing at a rate that's faster than a lot of, a lot of the rest of the city. And so I'm just curious to see how that balances versus, um, you know, the whole picture. It would just be important to get data other than to say, well, it's growing faster. How much faster, it's, uh, you know, you just have to go. Can I ask a second?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Then I'll wait a third. Haven't we, didn't we talk a year ago, two years ago, that our goal was a, um, ongoing goal of, uh, limiting to five percent for, um, our budget growth?
We had made a couple of statements like that, um, as well, yeah, I mean, that had been a statement we were, we were trying to work from, I think, beginning in last year, yes. Um, and that was, we had talked about measuring over a period of time, and last year we had a larger increase, so this would be another, you know.
Maybe third year.
Third, this was like sort of the second year of that, actually, cause it was, I think, last year when we made that.
Yeah.
Statement, yeah. Yeah, David.
On the screen, page of the three, the equalized pupil count is increasing here over the last four years, from three thousand nine sixty-eight, so we're expecting four thousand one twenty.
Yeah.
So that's hard data, while the four, one twenty's not hard data, that'll come out in a few weeks' time, but this is hard data so far, thirty-nine sixty-eight to four thousand eighty in two years, as the increase that we've actually seen here.
And that's a weighted increase.
But I get that very quick, but it's not broken down by, to me, it's, it's possible that all of that entire growth of hundred and twelve students could all be upper-middle class students who have, you know, dual parent.
It's possible, we have shared data in the past that shows that, you know, we've gone.
I don't doubt it, I just would be helpful to see.
Sure.
How that, how that breaks down.
Meredith?
Is there more presentation?
Yeah, we've been starting.
Okay, so I, I wanna bring up something, it's the finance committee, you might speak to it. It's mostly how the numbers translate, and if you were to drop that, how much we're talking about cuts. So, I, but I suspect you'll be addressing.
And I guess maybe that gets to the point of, um, Jeannie and or David, if you want. I know you've done this with, in, in particular with planning committee, but if you could speak some to give more background as well to the rest of the board, um, on, you know, the page where you worked through the original recommendations, which were referred to as draft one, steps taken to get to draft two, and how that fit in with the program goals that we're talking about.
You want us to start?
Yeah, cause speak, Keith had spoken a bit to the financial goal, it came from the finance committee, and I think what's up on the screen, actually, is the, you know, the tax rate piece, but I guess it's the other page, the, uh, if you could speak to some of the information now.
Sure, do you wanna skip the tax rate piece, go straight to me?
Well, I think, I think you need to go to this piece first, because there's still sort of an, there's still some unknowns in here, and then it can, how it flows through the tax rate.
Sure.
Could I request you speak a little louder, I hope it's muted.
Okay, is this for Jeannie or for me, or I can?
For Jeannie and for David.
Okay, I don't know, maybe do you wanna move this mic in between the two of you?
No, I have a mic here, it just needs to be turned up, and maybe we could give David the portable mic. Jeff, if you're able to do that.
This one's portable.
Oh, that one's portable, all right. So we'll ask David to use this one, or I'll use it while I'm reading it then. Um, so, the sheet that looks, the one-page sheet that says budget draft two point two, David has put it up. Um, as you recall, back in August, September, mostly September, we asked the community to give input on priorities of the district for your consideration. In October, the committees of ITC, diversity, equity, and curriculum reviewed the survey input, talked amongst themselves and with administrators, well, with me and, and my staff who came to the meetings. And each of those committees determined priorities. Draft one, in this, and, I'm sorry, before I get to draft one, and then I met with my administrator, administrative team, and said, understanding that this is a difficult year, again, what is it that we really need to look at? And all of that information is rolled into draft one. So when you see under draft one, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next to enrollment increases class size, at that time, for example, um, the, we were going to ask for three classroom teachers. If you see in draft one, down at, um, infrastructure and technology, uh, four hundred thousand dollars for increased custodial and maintenance needs, and if you go back to the ITC minutes of, of October, you'll see the discussion about needing two additional custodians, and needing to true up the, um, maintenance budget for increased costs of fuel, utilities, things like that. So that's just an example. That happened through October. In November, I was asked then, as the board approved that at the November meeting, I was asked to bring back to the late November meetings, um, a second draft that met the goal of the finance committee that the board had approved of a six point nine percent increase in equalized per pupil spending. That goal meant that out of that original draft one, I would need to cut two point five million dollars. I wanna be clear that some of that two point five million dollars is being cut from what was requested, and some of it's being cut from existing programs and services. The entire two point five is not from existing programs and services, it's a combination. It's also changing some models, it's accepting some of what people ask for, and looking at where can we find things, um, to exchange for that. So that work took place through November, and we came back to. and we came back to Finance Committee meeting, um, last Monday, and came within four-hundred thousand of that with a promise that we would find the other four-hundred thousand at that time. We, which I will be ready to do at your next meeting. We, in doing that work, the administration looked at the priorities as, well, also in November, the different committees, those three committees were asked to revisit their priorities, knowing that Draft One was more than what the board Finance Committee goal was. So each of those committees also looked at their priorities and, and ranked, were asked to rank them for us, for the administration to do the work, coming back to Finance Committee. So Draft Two is the adjusted budget. You can see that in some cases, the cuts appear to be from what the ask was. For example, again, in teaching and learning, enrollment increases in class size, the original request was per two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. A hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars has been taken out of that request, which means that the administration with my leadership looked at where can we perhaps increase class sizes? We've done, as you know, we've been doing capacity studies and class size enrollment studies and looking at our policy, and ultimately out of that, the continued ask is for one teacher out of three, for example. In other areas, you'll see where we actually were reducing more than what was in the ask, and that's because we needed to cut into our actual, we needed to reduce our actual programs or functions in order to get to where, where we are. In some cases, such as student academic supports, we've been having conversations about doing things differently. The Curriculum Committee has been hearing some reports from us about getting to a multi-tiered system of supports by utilizing our special education staff differently. But as you can see, there will be some, um, some additional reductions that need to be made in the budget outside of the class size piece. We also looked at the impact of sequestration. That five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars reflects almost entirely classroom teachers, so that would affect class size with the exception of two positions, which are a literacy coach for the district and a math coach for the district. So that's what that five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars represents that we're asking to keep. So if you look at Draft One and you look at Draft Two, Draft One is where we started after we analyzed all the priorities, we being board and administration, and identifying what we felt is actually needed next year for the budget. And that came to two-point-seven million dollar increase. In Draft Two, I needed to, um, adjust that, again, with the board committees looking at priorities and coming back to administration, and I came within four-hundred thousand dollars of, um, what the board has asked. The additional four-hundred thousand dollars was discussed yesterday at our all administrators meeting, but has not gone to finance, so this is the information that went to finance. That leaves a cumulative total of, in this version that you're looking at, an ask of six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars that will be reduced by four-hundred thousand dollars in order to meet the board goal. We did ask, after the Planning Committee asked for a little bit more detail on what's within each of these categories, we are trying to keep this at the forty-thousand-foot level, because, actually, for the very reason that I think it was Marion brought up earlier, if we get increased revenues, some of these positions can be put back in, um, within the priorities that have been set. So keeping it at the forty-thousand-foot level, we have a plan as to where we're going to go on each of these, and I try to address that plan under each priority in the, in the final columns of the need that we're addressing and the approach of how we're addressing it. For example, again, ELL needs, perhaps we need to add our resources more slowly than what the ask was. So all of this, at the current level, leads to the financial, um, the financial piece, which we'll show you. But do you have questions on priorities and where we are? Meredith?
In light of the letter from Edmonds, what is the student behavior supports?
Again, I'd like to keep it a little bit less specific than, than a particular position or positions.
Oh, okay, I hear you.
Because, because I may be able to put, we're still trying to, you know, look at, but we are looking at that within our student behavior supports, we think that we can make some changes and do some things differently, which would afford a reduction in staffing to make that happen.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought it was an ask and you were reducing, maybe I'm not reading.
Uh, Student Behavior Supports did have an ask, part of that ask was, I can, I'm more comfortable talking about asks. Part of that ask was assistant principals, which I just don't believe that we can afford for next year.
Okay. And it, yeah, I guess I, I wasn't asking for, you know, a position much more, I didn't understand.
The type of things that would go in there?
I don't think, I don't think the ask, okay, maybe I should clarify, the ask was not to add a behavior specialist, was it?
The ask was actually to have, add assistant principals at the larger elementary schools, for larger elementary schools.
Okay. Because they are asking for a behavior specialist, and I noticed in the letter that they said there's one at EMS, but there's none.
That's correct, there's none.
Okay. I'm assuming that they're.
We don't have a behavior specialist throughout the district.
I'm assuming that they're, they're assuming that, because the person who used to be a behavior specialist is now a disability specialist.
Could be, yeah, that would make sense.
I, I mean, I, I don't know if that's true. Okay. Okay.
Marion?
So, the line that jumps out to me, and I think some other people too, probably, is the student academic support swing from a plus of three-hundred thousand to a negative of six-hundred-and-thirty thousand? And I'm, I think that, that that's beyond the forty-thousand-foot level, so if you could give a little bit more clarity about how you can get to, are we looking at changing, what are we looking at in terms of changing the service delivery model? Is this all about MTSS? And if not, you know, how, if you could just explain a little more, because that seems almost unbelievable, unless we really change.
It is, it is going to affect positions that go beyond the requests. And it is looking at, starting with the priority of class size and direct instruction to students in the core academic areas, looking beyond that, are there some different ways that we can do things? Are there perhaps some positions that we could ask the community to volunteer for that are not direct instruction to students, for example? So those are the kinds of things that, that we're looking at within our plan. Is, are there any programs that, um, that we never fully implemented that we might consider no longer being able to afford? Those are the types of things.
Are those programs that, I mean, one of the things that student academic supports got lumped into there was sort of the whole differentiated instruction idea. So, when we talk about reducing by so much, how are we going to make the decision between whether you're going to reduce, for example, paraeducators or whether you're going to reduce the after-school program? Like, what, what, what's helping you to make those decisions to get that big number?
So, so those decisions are made at the administrative level, as we're trying to move the board into the appropriate level of decision-making. And what's guiding those decisions are the priorities as identified through the board committee work and the work of the administrators. So, the, those ongoing discussions at the committee meetings and identifying those priorities are how those are being made.
Okay, so I'm going to be very specific then. How is MTSS going to be done, given this?
Oh, okay. So, MTSS in particular, we are looking at a model, again, of using our existing special education staff and reallocating, um, the staff to a percentage of their time working specifically on interventions for students who are not yet special education, which would be the tier-two intervention in the multi-tiered system of support. We are working on a plan, we're talking with administrators, we're playing out.
Can I clarify one thing about that? So if you're moving someone from a position that's being fifty percent reimbursed to a position that's not being fifty percent reimbursed, that's going to cost the district money? So how is that going to save, how, how does that go into the save the money plan?
It's a whole package, so I have to look at, we have to look at the cost as a total and adjust for those particular costs, also looking at, um, time studies and how we can, how we're actually using that staffing. So that work is being done right now by Dylan and David, and is built into the budget, adjusting for that and looking where we find additional savings in other places to make that happen.
So, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand, I mean, that's nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, it's a huge amount of money. I mean, you can just think about like how many staff would have to go in there, or how many different programs would have to not be bought to get to that. I'm still having trouble figuring out how you're going to save that much money and still keep the quality of service more or less where it is, except shaving off a few programs here and there. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get, is there a major shift in service? I understand the delivery model is.
It's not all about the, the multi-tiered system of supports, it's all about that service. And I will say that in this, but, I, I need to say that, um, with this amount of reductions in the budget, the quality of service, some people may find will change. I can't, you can't continue to get the same quality when you're not paying the dollars to get it. We have to change the way we do some things. Some programs have to change, some programs have to eliminate it.
I totally get that. I totally get it. But when someone says, we're going to have a whole new service model of delivery, and Dylan says, I'm going to change the way I'm delivering this huge chunk of our budget,
Right.
and then I see a huge decrease.
Right. So we have to look outside that system. We have, I have to look at other programs. Are there, any, do we have other underperforming programs in the district that are not core classroom instruction that perhaps we cannot support anymore? Do we have some support staff positions that perhaps we cannot support anymore? We need to, I'm sorry, I wish, I have water, but it went right here.
Should I turn?
Behind my computer. Thank you. Do you mind opening? So we, that's what we're doing. We're looking at the budget as an entire piece. We're setting the, the priorities we're set by the board. In trying to meet those priorities, it also means that we're making some trade-offs in some other areas.
I, I get that, Jeannie, but can you at least give me a little bit of idea in that nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars? Are we talking fifty percent personnel and twenty percent program costs? Are we talking sixty percent goes to the redoing of the MTSS and forty percent?
Well, one of the things that I, that I'm most comfortable telling you, because this isn't really affect current programs but an ask, is it's three-hundred thousand dollars in asking for two paraeducators per school for literacy and math. So three-hundred thousand of that reduction comes from that ask.
So that was asked, and now it's being taken away?
And now it's not going to be added. So it's asked in Draft One, and it's taken out of Draft Two.
Okay. So what's something that wasn't an ask that's being taken out, and not a specific thing, I'm not asking for a name, just like in general.
I don't know how to answer the question.
Can you, like, what's a type of program that might be underperforming? I, I really don't, I'm asking this, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, not, I really, like, are you talking about a language program? Are you talking about, like, what, what is that?
Can I piggyback on her question?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'm having a lot of problem with the, the term appropriate level of policy governance. And it says who is the appropriate, I mean, who, who's making the determination as to what the appropriate level of policy governance is? Is, is it the governing body that's making that determination?
Because I'm actually.
Patrick, I'm.
That's not about.
Just a second. What are you referring to? Because policy governance is a.
This, this is the term, I, I think, Jeannie.
It's a term, that's a term of art for a, basically for a style of board work. So I think there's something else I think you actually mean by what you're saying.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to use the word that, that I, that I jotted down, what I thought I heard Jeannie saying, and that, that if we're trying to get to the appropriate level of policy governance over the, over the budget, that what we need to do is say, here are the pools of money, you distribute them the way that you feel. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I, I'm against that, I'm saying I'm unconvinced that that is a model of governance that I'm comfortable with at this point. And this is what, I, I don't want to put words in Miriam's mouth, so you can please contradict me if you do. But I, I, I want to know what six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar cut the student academic support is, is cutting.
I think this is something that I, that, you know, we as a board talked about trying to be able to go less to say, you know, these are the specific items that we're cutting. Let me ask a question. Is a valid question to be asking, because I, I'm hearing us ask specifics, but one thing I'm wondering about is, what I think, what I felt like we were trying to offer to the administration was the case where we, instead of saying, we're going to have X number of paraeducators to work in the kindergarten class, which was an ad from a couple of years ago, to say, we would like to put a certain amount of funding into providing additional adults in the classroom where we feel we have, um, you know, particular needs. And I think in this case, and maybe I'll ask, is, is the fair question to say, because I haven't heard enough quite specific on this question, which is, what are some areas that you're looking at? Because you, we, I see six-hundred thousand dollars in net cut. We must have an idea, you must have some ideas of areas that you're looking at. What are those areas? They're not necessarily the areas that are going to be cut, but what are some of those things that we're looking at? And, you know, maybe even how would, is it, you know, in more generalities, where will you be looking? Because we're trying to offer the flexibility to the district to be able to work in this. Like, maybe my, one question I have is, what is everything that comes under student academic support? So there will be cuts that are taken apart from all these different areas? I'm trying to reframe it to the both of you, is there a question in there that you want to go? And maybe I'll ask Ben, you wanted to, something triggered here.
Well, just it's more of a question, maybe it's fitting in, but it's helping, whether or not I'm framing it in my mind, right? Is, what, what through this process, is the process for bringing that level of detail to either the committee or to the board as a whole, so that we can make a determination, you know, what you were talking about, whether this is a, you know, where we would weigh in on the policy implication of the administration's proposals? So we may not get into, although we certainly reserve the right, to get into the micromanagement of what goes where.
Yeah.
But to go with the spirit of what you were saying, of giving the administration the leeway, but where it starts to cross into, in what way does this impact the policy that we are trying to set? And how that impacts, you know, so where is, where is that presentation happen? Does that happen like as we go through this process, saying, we're having this discussion now, and then again next month? Or is this something that comes back to the committees to kind of hash out and try to match proposal to policy?
Let me leave that to that.
If that's.
For an extra second, but, thank you.
Yeah. But can I sort of keep that on the table of something we need input on?
Can I use this as a hypothetical to try to get at what we're using? So, let's say hypothetical, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. One of the things that's being, of a cut that's being considered, and it's a hypothetical, is that we're going to go back to half-day kindergarten, all right? I, I, I'm making something up, that we're going back to half-day kindergarten, but we're not hearing that that's what the student academic support is. And then suddenly, this budget passes and we say, oh, we're going to go to half-day kindergarten. Like, at a, at a, at a, a service delivery model, I'm not going to support going to half-day kindergarten, but I've, but I've kind of advocated my role to say, no, I'm not, I may be in favor of six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in cuts, but not if that six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in cuts demands us to go to half-day kindergarten throughout the district. So that's why the nuance is, is, is important. I want to know what, what is being thought of in that. And I'm, Miriam, I cut into you.
I, I would like to say, I, what you said is exactly what I'd like to hear. I would like to hear generally what's being cut and why, general program goals and ideas. And even if it's not my role to argue with the specifics, I want to be able to know what's being thought about.
Maybe it is your role to argue with the specifics.
And, and maybe it is, but, but I want to get there. I mean, I just, because a, a person, I don't want to argue about the specifics, but this is so unspecific. This is the hundred-thousand-foot range from where I'm sitting, and I need to be more at the thirty-thousand-foot range. Otherwise, I can't vote for the budget, because I don't know what I'm voting for.
I, I think also putting in, maybe there's also to me a question that comes out of this, which is, why is it in student academic supports where you're feeling like you're taking the money? And whereas the impact of sequestration, which were, what you already described, these particular coaches across the district, you're maintaining those, but you're looking at these other areas, you know, why was that choice made as well?
All right, so let me see if, if I can do this. So, it's specifically in the student academic supports, we as an administrative team, as I already mentioned, agreed not to fund the request for additional paraeducators for literacy and math. And in fact, we need to look at paraeducators across the district again to see if there are other ways that we could provide some of the supports that paraeducators have supported in the past. We also do need to look at our foreign languages program and look at our, our class size loads at the high school to see if, just as I looked at the middle school and elementary school, we're looking at class size loads really in all, across all of the schools, to see if they can be increased and still within policy and contract, and we believe that they can. In addition, we are looking at additional revenues under student academic supports, specifically around after-school revenues and how we can increase our revenues and take funds out of, to replace local dollars with some revenue support in after-school programs. Sequestration, actually, I, I'm not sure if I understood you correctly, Alan, but I said there were two positions in that five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand that are coaches. All the rest of those positions are classroom teachers. And there has been discussion, and, and again, just yesterday with administrators around the coaching positions and, and finding the additional four-hundred thousand dollars. And so we're looking at coaching and embedded professional development. We also, not only are we looking at the decisions that are being made within the context of the discussions at the board level, but also within the context of the signed assurances that we wrote to the state for not meeting achievement. We had to do restructuring plans in five of our schools in the district for next year, and so we're also looking within that. I already mentioned in ELL needs that, you know, we had discussion about increasing our supports more slowly. Again, we're pushing up against increasing loads, either class sizes or class. Again, we're pushing up against increasing loads, either class sizes or class, or case loads. Looking at providing our, in student behavior supports, looking, again, not accepting some requests and looking at providing some student behavior supports a little bit differently as we're analyzing largely our model of delivery, our system of delivery that includes paraeducators all around. And infrastructure and technology in the larger areas, it's, you know, how much, while we, there are some things that we know we have to do, what are some things we can do differently? Specifically, that's down here was not discussed at the board level, but is there a different way that we could do our legal services model that might be on a retainer versus an hourly and reduce our costs in legal services? Perhaps, looking at preventive maintenance, perhaps this isn't the year that we can afford the, the request by the board to increase preventive maintenance by another twenty five percent, point two five percent. And diversity and equity, we're rearranging that budget significantly and specifically looking for areas where we can support what's in the plan around recruitment and retention.
I guess one, okay, Liz.
Jeanie, I didn't hear you mention community connections, is that the family school partnership?
Oh, so, thanks. So we have been building, we have been building our capacity for community connections over the last several years. And we have to look at what programs can still remain. We have a couple of programs in community connections and we're revisiting those and reducing some costs of those and eliminating others.
But it looks like you're eliminating all of it. The seventy five thousand?
Seventy five thousand dollar cut from this year's budget in community.
Right. That's a seventy five thousand dollar cut in all of our community connections. Which also still could change. Again, as I said, the administrators met yesterday, I had another four hundred thousand dollar goal. And as we get additional revenues, some of those things can change the other direction as well, as we hopefully will get additional revenues. I did hear good news that is totally unconfirmed at the federal front today, that Congress may have reached a deal on sequestration and that may look good for education. I won't believe it until I get it in writing, but it gives me hope. And so as we're also looking at how we're changing services and making changes, we're also trying to identify how things go back if we do get the funding.
Something clicked for me when you were talking about the increase in preventive maintenance. And that it's one of the things I think that is troubling with me as we're sort of changing this process, which, when we look at an item like student academic supports and you show, okay, we were looking to add certain things, that's not in fact to say, you know what, not only in that broad area, we're actually going to be looking to make some savings. I see six hundred and thirty thousand dollars and I don't kind of know how big of an effect that is. And this is something that I feel like I've been missing in this whole process if we're just putting numbers down on the paper. But you did mention that the increase in preventive maintenance was like a point two five or something like that percent increase on the, you know, or whatever percent of the preventive maintenance budget that would be. I think that's one thing that I find missing right now in the way we're presenting things is, these numbers in, in absolute dollars don't have a relative meaning to me. And then also, I think, actually, I'm gonna need to come back at some point to Ben and what you asked, because I think that that still really hasn't been quite addressed.
Is there a question?
The question is, yeah, relatively, how do these things show up? I mean, six hundred and thirty sounds like a lot, it's the biggest number on the page.
Right.
But it could be the smallest percentage. That's missing here, that I don't get that, I, you know, we need to be able to see.
I think that's feedback, not a question.
No, it's a-
I'm not sure if I can answer that at this moment.
Well, if you can-
David, can I?
Our, our annual budget is about seventy million dollars, so seven hundred thousand is one percent.
No, but-
But no, no, that doesn't make, that's wrong, David, that's the wrong question. The question is, of six hundred and thirty is what percent of student academic support budget?
Okay.
We can get that number for you. We, my total salaries is in the forty nine million range. So if six hundred and thirty is, say, five hundred thousand salaries and the rest benefits, then I can get about, into the math. But we can give you the number, we can get to-
But then-
Okay.
Is it just a quick add on to that?
I think that the question more specifically is that if this all represents, well, for our local funding, for our tax base, could we please have a budget that shows what our current fiscal year budget is? And which line items these proposals hit as a percentage of the line item for the current fiscal year?
Sure. Yeah, maybe we can, right now.
Correct.
Or at least to some extent, I'm not sure if we're gonna go as far as you'd like, but-
Okay, and while you're looking, Miriam, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I thought we were asking David for what percent is nine hundred and thirty thousand of student academic supports? And you answered what percentage is it of the personnel budget? So my question is, is the personnel budget student academic support? Or is student academic support something other? It sounded like it was a conglomeration, some things personnel, some things program. So I think what Alan was asking, what I would ask, was asking, is I'd really love to see each of these, you know, what is the actual budget for that line item? And then what are we taking away and what is that percent? Because I agree, if, if we, if student academic supports really is the personnel budget, then that's not a very big percentage. But if student academic supports is really three million dollars, it is a big percentage. So I'm, I would love to, I would love to see that.
In the budget draft that was just passed out to you, and this is, this was just pulled together tonight in anticipation, I guess, of some version of what you're asking. In the regular education budget line, the fourteen, FY fourteen current approved budget is twenty six point eight million. The, we're asking for, no, it doesn't make sense to me that, David?
How'd you get from twenty six to twenty one?
What you see here is a historical trend that was asked by one of our board members. And in the first two columns, you see that FY thirteen year, what was approved and what was actual. So for regular instruction, what was approved was twenty five million, what was actual was twenty six million. In FY fourteen approved twenty six million and so far we committed twenty four million. That means we've paid and accrued encumbered expenses of twenty four million, so this is a small amount left. And then in the next bunch of columns, this to do with FY fifteen budget. The very next column, fifteen current program says, what is the cost of doing the FY fourteen program at FY fifteen costs? So that's taking the same program and putting out, putting the next year's price tables. So we go up to from twenty six eight to twenty seven seven. And then draft one is showing what the additional goals were to, to add program in regular instruction, increasing by one point four million. And then in order to get into the, to the financial goal of the board, a million and point zero was taken out of draft two. So at this point, draft two of the fifteen budget is twenty eight point one compared to twenty six point eight for the fourteen approved and twenty five point eight for thirteen approved. Is that, is that answering the question that you had earlier in the month?
Oh, early in the month?
Yes, you wrote a letter requesting this type of information, so that's why I just prepared it.
Um, no, this is great, it just raises more questions for me. Thank you.
And this is a sample, so this will be carried all through the budget, so you see all the different areas. So you see what is the support services from students and what is the administrative cost.
Just one second, I'd like, Henry.
No, I'm sorry.
Just a quick clarifying question. So, so teaching and learning is the same thing as saying regular ed instruction, it looks like to me?
In this particular case, yes it is.
Okay.
Yes it is.
So in this current budget, there's no changes to special ed, co-curricular, athletics or after school in the current draft?
There are no changes to special education or to-
Oh, sorry, cut to after school, yep.
Yeah. There is a reduction in after school and local funding, again, looking at how we can achieve revenues differently. So in that particular case, it's not a reduction in program, but a reduction, an increase in revenue.
Just again, Miriam, did you still have something?
I think, I think so, maybe not, but, so this is good and interesting to look at, but it still doesn't map to this exactly. So it still doesn't help me to exactly map these changes to this, because it's like one's calling something and one's calling something else. It makes it more confusing. We've mapped that somehow.
Is there a simple answer to that, or is it, is that true?
I think it's feedback.
Okay. Liz?
Um, so this looks like it's actually adding three hundred and eighty thousand to regular ed instruction, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Meredith?
So-
Hey, Meredith?
Well, it was-
So you-
Oh, sorry.
So I think what's confusing is that there's-
If it would help, if you look at teaching and learning, that's all regular education instruction. So ultimately, we are adding to regular education instruction.
But what's confusing is that on teaching and learning, you've got about six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars absorbed by sequestration, ELL needs and class size. As maintaining those, but you've got three hun- the net effect over here is an addition of three hundred and eighty. So I think-
And again, there's trade offs and there are things we're letting go.
Right, but I think what Miriam, correct me if I'm wrong, is how do you map three hundred and eighty to the-
Anything to do with student academic support.
To the, um-
Or you can do classes.
The net effect of-
Well, teaching and learning is negative one hundred thousand.
Negative one hundred thousand on the, on the priorities.
You, you cannot take this and put it on top of what's up there. I mean, they, they don't, they don't match.
Right.
And I mean, not, not that this isn't, I'm sorry.
Karen.
Yeah, not that this isn't, not that this isn't helpful, but this isn't the entire budget that we're putting on here.
Right.
And regular education instruction is not exactly equal to teaching and learning on what's up on the screen there. I mean, they're, they're not the same thing. Because here we have an increase of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars and here we have a, a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars. So this, this is instructive, but we have to be careful saying, this isn't, this isn't everything that we have here.
David, is something you want to say?
I was gonna say that the teaching and learning, the curri- the teaching and learning with the curriculum committee of the board does not align itself with the functional codes of the agency of education. We can do some work to pull some, I have it on my list, I have what the functions are that tie into the traditional annual report budget format. So I can, I can do that. It, it doesn't drop out, but it can be done. So teaching and learning would include such things as supports for students like social workers or guidance counselors or nurses or those kind of things. Professional development for teachers would go in there, library would go in there. Technology integration would go into teaching, teaching and learning in, in the account structure of the, of the state.
Curricular materials would go in there.
Curriculum materials.
But those aren't part of regular instruction on this, I'm guessing.
Curriculum materials would be, would be in regular instruction.
Yeah.
Improvement instruction materials would be somewhere else. So we can get it closer, we can get it closer, I hear the question. You'll see it mapping across.
Meredith?
So, Jeanie, I just wanted to go back to your blog and see what the connection is when you're kind of telling the district to brace itself for cuts in three to five million dollars. And I don't think I'm seeing that here, so.
No, at the moment, you're seeing about, you will be seeing about two and a half million. But when I wrote that blog, the board, I think, had, had barely or not, I mean, that blog was written a while back with the information at that time. The information changes on an almost daily basis between November fifteenth and January fifteenth until it's set in stone, with additional pieces of information coming in all the time. So I don't think three to five million is, you know, is, is what to focus on, but the fact that there, there needs to be some significant changes in the way we're doing things, business in the district.
Okay. Just, you know, people come up to you and they hear that and they ask you about that, so. Just wanted to make sure we weren't headed in that direction.
Well, we're headed in that direction.
If I can just give, put some numbers on that. We're looking at, when we get to the, the chart with all the, all the numbers over there in a minute, you'll see that with, with these two million dollars of cuts that have been identified here so far, plus another four hundred thousand is two, two point four million. If we take another two point two million, we will get the tax rate down to ten percent. So five million of cuts would bring us a ten percent tax rate increase. So Jeanie wasn't far off, still, still true today.
And to clarify, that would be five million, this is where I get really confused by all these numbers. Is that five million in current programs or five million in asks combined?
Combined.
Combined. Combined.
Current program and asks.
It'd be five million dollars from draft one, does that help?
Okay, yeah.
But basically, this took out all the asks, so.
Not all.
Pretty close to all of them. I mean, we've got two hundred thousand dollars-
There may be many who agree with you, but it's not all.
But, but pretty close, so.
Under teaching and learning, it took out. Effectively, what's on the cumulative total, the yellow bar there, is what remains from the asks. So.
Seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
No, that's from the-
Plus thirty one thousand.
Well, that's actually just for the technology and infrastructure.
Right, seven seventeen minus thirty one, or plus thirty one minus one hundred is the total of million dollars.
Yeah, there's another bar that you can't see.
Oh, I can't see on that one, my, my voice is 48.
I can just get one illustration of how lack of, over last, um, board committee structure and the accounting works. From an accounting point of view, the technology for 21st century education and the infrastructure and facilities at two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, from my perspective, what I have to work with, that blends up in teaching and learning. Because those are computers for students to work with as an instructional experience. So if you take it out from there and put it up there, you suddenly see a very different picture. So it, it does get complicated very quickly.
Liz, I, just, Ben, I just want to remind, Ben, I want to come back to your question, because I think that's more of a question for the board actually than, but I, I want to make sure, we get back to that at some point. Okay, Liz.
So is everything on the program goals in the regular teaching category? You mean, is everything on the screen in regular teaching or are there things in these other categories?
If you, if you look-
Can you please explain which things are the program goals or which categories?
No, because it's within, well, community connections, for example. Community connections, for example, is in function code twenty one ten. All the regular education functions are eleven hundred. You don't have twenty one ten on here, as you said, this is a sample.
So we don't have the whole budget here?
This is just a sample to show you what's coming.
What could, what he could do.
So we will get a full edit and it will encompass the program goals. Could you please identify which the program goals by line item? By these categories?
I know it doesn't map directly, but it doesn't map directly, but it's, yeah.
Just so we know what, what categories about the program goals are, please, thank you.
Ben, could I actually kind of come back to your question? Because yours was more of a, a broader question, I think, than what we had some discussion here about. Can you ref-
Well, it's just trying to frame for me more of the process, you know, going, what I was hearing from other folks, you know, talking about is that line of what we're trying to do in our relationship with the administration through this process and our role in policy setting, you know, where, kind of where that line starts to be and at what point it was the process for us to be hearing more of the specifics, like we've been having this conversation now, to determine whether this is having an impact specifically on policy. It's just that fine line where the leeway we're trying to give the administration impacts specifically the direction we want to set, as you said, the board goals, et cetera. And what's the form for making those kind of, you know, for hearing that out and determinations? Is it only committee level, is it sitting around this table for the next, you know, month or so?
Yeah, I think that's something that I think we want to be talking as a board about. I mean, and I, Patrick, I think, I heard Patrick actually say that he needs, you know, he would like to know and have to weigh in at a more detailed level than I think we were, than we have been talking about in this particular process. And I think that, you know, I think as a board, we have to basically have an agreement at which level we're at. And we were trying to put it to a higher level. And it is something that we've talked about being a change during this process, this particular year. And if, you know, if we go too far, or we have to work- And if, you know, if we go too far, or we have to work ourselves through it, as I've been, even I pointed out tonight, I think there are places where I've realized, wait a minute, well, I'm trying not to get deeper down in, there are some questions I'm not getting answered that I feel are still in that line. Continue.
No, so I was saying, it's just trying to find that as we're working through and developing that working relationship, making sure, you know, because we're obviously answering the phone calls and talking to the individuals and dealing with the questions on the specifics and in the weeds, but just making sure that we're following through on the process that's appropriate. So, you know, I want, I don't need the person who, you know, necessarily might be managing, but I have to have an understanding where, you know, when we, oh, look, here's six hundred thousand dollars, well, now we're talking, the approach starts to turn to, and how does that impact policy? And we should be hearing that, and then try to see how much we want to get into directing the administration one way or the other in the specific areas.
Liz, and I'll come back in a second.
Um, what I'm not clear on is the process and the timeline, because I'm interested in understanding when we're going to hear how the budget reflects the district priorities. So when are we going to hear that is one question. And is the public going to hear that at the public hearings next week? So if the public's going to hear it, then I guess that's the first time we'll hear it. And then, um, if, do we have more than one chance to vote on the budget in January? Um, so would that be kind of our first and last chance to support a budget that reflects the priorities that we're going to hear about either next week or some other time?
So draft one is the priorities, and there are policies in place. There have been committee level discussions in October and November about the priorities, and draft one reflects that, draft two reflects the changes to that. If one you're asking is, are you, when are you going to hear which position goes under each one, then...
I'm, I'm so... Actually, speaking to the motion, the motion actually says...
The detail is the...
With more detail on how this budget meets the identified...
So that was intended to be the new columns... The new columns called need addressed and approach. That was how we, that's how we tried to provide that, um, that detail.
The motion is asking for more detail.
That didn't exist last week. This is our attempt to answer that part of the motion.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
Uh, so Liz, when this came to, um, planning committee, the last two columns were not in what was presented to policy, ah, I'm sorry, to planning. And so what Jeannie has just said is, the way that they, one way that they've addressed that is by putting in these last two columns. And I guess that then asks a question, is this, you know, if this is the motion we accept, do we need, you know, we can, you know, is that enough detail?
Right. Is there feedback on, on the detail? But this was our attempt to answer that, quite, that part of the motion that wasn't there when we brought it forward last week.
Meredith and Patrick, yeah?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, I mean, um, is this really, you know, I don't absolutely fully understand the policy governance yet. I'm still trying to...
Well, we're not in policy governance, but I can just say...
Right, and I know everyone says that, but it kind of feels like it, 'cause I've had conversations, not, and I know we're not totally in it, but it does kind of... The, the process of not getting down the weeds feels like it.
It's actually in state statute. We actually have been much deeper than, it's not policy governance, you have a...
But, but you're...
I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, so what, just a comment?
I just said clarify.
Just a comment.
Clarification, because I don't fully understand.
So, may I try?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so what we're trying to move the board to is, in the past, you have had to actually decide, are we going to keep a family and consumer sciences teacher, or are we going to keep athletics, or are we going to keep the Chinese program, or that, that type of stuff? The result of having those discussions, besides the fact that you get lobbied because every single dollar has an advocate behind it, or else it wouldn't have been in the budget to begin with. So the consequences of that level of discussion at the board level, however, Alan, I think, gave a really good example, is two years ago, you made promises to the community that we're going to have kindergarten paras. That next year, the kindergarten class was smaller than the year before, but I couldn't move those kindergarten paras to the first grade with the now-large class that never got the service that they needed in kindergarten, because the promise was we were going to have kindergarten parrots. We're trying to get the board out of that type of scenario. As I said, revenues are still going to change, we hope for the better. And as those revenues change, to be able to, to, um, fill in where we need to make cuts and to be able to have the ability to shift in how we're doing our programs is essential to a living budget. Also, in the past, we have tended to vote on a budget that became static. And so if I ca- if I needed a new teacher, um, the next school year, I came to the board and asked for a new teacher as though that were an add-on to the budget. The reality is, the budget needs to be living. The administration needs the flexibility to live within the budget, to change the budget, to make decisions, to cut things or to add things in order to accommodate the changes that happen within the district on a regular basis. The year I became superintendent, that fall, we had eighty brand-new Solly Bantu students, brand-new, who landed in the district in August. For example, we needed to add three ELL teachers in August. We didn't have really the flexibility necessarily to change the budget to accommodate for that. And that's what we're trying to set with this, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I've always understood it, but just based on this conversation here, I'm now trying to figure out what we're going to say to the voters, because I don't know if they're going to get it as much as well. So I, I mean, I just mostly was thinking out loud, and because I've had conversations actually with people who work in the district about what policy governance is and moving toward that model, I, I guess I thought we're sort of slowly moving in that direction.
Yeah, I think that...
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, this is, right now, a discussion of the budgets. I, I would hope we can kind of keep the issues a bit separate. I know what you're saying about trying not to be quite as much in the weeds, and that is a particular goal of that, but I don't, it is two separate things. Just a second, Linda, Patrick, is it, is it Patrick in mind?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, two, two things. One, I, I guess for me, on a personal level, I still would like greater nuance in the detail. When it says, "Underlooking under, um, community connections, support involvement at reduced level", well, I figured that out from seventy-five thousand dollar cut that we're going to have a reduced level of involvement, but I don't know what that, I still don't know what that means. And I, you know, I brought this up at policy, I'm sorry, at planning, that, you know, it, it, not just where, where the board priorities are, but where are the committee priorities reflected in this? So that's what I would like, whatever. I also, Rebecca kind of just said under her breath over here, and she said, "selling the budget", and we can have this discussion here, but, you know, the public, when they're going to say, well, you know, what, what are we buying with, with what we're seeing? And we've been, and if we just say, you know, we're going to change the program delivery for greater effectiveness and efficiency, if I'm a member of the public, I'm going to say, I don't know what the heck that means, and I'm not going to be for it, or I am going to be for it or whatever, but there's, there's not, there's, there's not, you know, my teach, my kids, what is the evidence? You know, what, there's no evidence that I can grasp on to to, to understand what it is that, um, that really changes. And, and I think that we need to be aware of that when it comes to selling. Selling what we end up passing.
Can I comment before Meredith?
Yeah, that'd be good, because I think, that's like there's some feedback saying, from what I heard, there is, there are certain things in this approach and need addressed that really doesn't provide any detail.
And, and just a reminder, we're only in our first year of trying this approach, and so it, it feels clunky at first. Um, but just a, a reminder, and some of the response as well, is way back in September, um, the public and the board were asked for recommendations on what programs and functions we could let go of. Um, and that, that work does continue, again, as we go on. Um, in how we talk about the budget, we need to talk about what priorities the board has set and how, and that we're going to meet. Those priorities is where we need to be going. And again, that, some of those priorities also came out of work of surveying the public.
I just said, Linda, Liz, and so Linda, Miriam, and then Liz here, it had been, had...
I think, I understand, I hear what Patrick is saying, and I think, over the last, say, sixty years, we've trained the citizens of Burlington to come in and advocate for the hockey program or the whatever. And in an attempt to go the other way, we're struggling with it. The city, citizens are also going to struggle with it. It's going to be a challenge for everybody, but I think it is not sustainable to continue to go on where we, we react to the loudest voice, because when we do that, we react, again, to the people who understand how to work the system. And, um, I, for one, was really uncomfortable with, with what happened last year at the budget hearings. And I, I support what we're doing. I just think it's going to be a real challenge for us, but I also think it's going to be a challenge for, for the ci... We're going to have to educate everybody that there's a new way of doing things. After sixty years of hearing, come in and hammer and bring four hundred of your closest friends, and you'll get what you want. They don't then think about where that cut comes from. They only think they got what they wanted.
Linda, I actually, I'd like to ask you a question, and then, what then helps us, you know, over you? You, you know, you say, okay, I support this process, but I need help with the community. Is there anything missing in here that you might need help with? Maybe it's rhetorical, but I guess that would...
No, I, I, I think it's going to be pa- this year, I think, is going to be extremely painful on all fronts for, for the citizens who are going to be ramping up to come in to advocate for a particular program, and they don't know what they're, they're not going to hear that, and they're going to get frustrated, and it's going to be, it's a trust level for us and a frustration issue for us, too. I, it's changes, change, we're asking kids to change, we're asking teachers to change, we're going to have to ask the board to change.
Okay, good, Miriam, Liz, Jill, and then, Rebecca?
I would like to say that I think the key to this is transparency. And where I don't, where I feel it broke down is, I'm a new board member, I haven't been through this before. However, I was hearing a lot about a new budget process this year that was going to be different. And what I heard is we were going to start earlier, we were going to get the, the, um, public to give us their specific program priorities, very specific, setting a stage for them to ask about specific programs that they wanted. I didn't hear that we were changing the role of the school board in creating the budget. So this is news to me. I'm sitting here thinking, oh, my gosh, did we vote on this? Did we decide to do this? It suddenly happened. And when you say where we are moving the board, I respect that, but I feel a little manipulated, because I didn't know I was being moved. So that's one thing I want to say. And then the other thing I want to say is that, you know, I think, I hope that you're hearing from us that, that this process we're going through is not really working right now, that just as you may have some frustrations about the way the board has responded to some of your questions, I think we're having some frustration now in being asked to make decisions when we don't feel there's enough information. So I wanted to make those two, two points.
Liz?
Um, so I'm probably more, um, where Linda is, in the big picture, I get it. And that's, I mean, that's part of the reason I wanted to get on the board, because I think the budget process has been micromanaged, and I think the community has to suck it up. And I think we all have to acknowledge that this is not sustainable, the way we do business. Um, but I also agree with Miriam that, um, when I look back at the finance committee meetings over the fall and I look at what was represented to us, and I, um, listen to what you just said, Jeannie, about priorities, 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 I still don't see, um, I still don't hear the case being made for certain priorities for this budget presentation, um, directing us to what your priorities are. I don't, like, it's fine with me if you say the priorities are going to be core curriculum, athletics, and co-curriculars, and ELL and special ed. Those are, and I don't necessarily mean that so concretely, it can, you know, have all this messaging stuff, too, like community engagement, but, but when I, but, you know, if you say to me, this budget does achieve community engagement, but the family-school partnership is cut, then I need to know how community engagement is still a priority reflective in this budget. So I don't necessarily need to know the specific line items, I don't necessarily need to know, you know, the details. I just need to know, and it may involve revealing some of the specific line items, how you are going to meet the community engagement priority. We have four board priorities that we've been talking about since I've been on the board, community engagement, inclusion and diversity, um, and transparency and accountability and data-informed decision-making. And then we've got all these minutes and documents from the past finance committee meetings that indicate kind of what Miriam said, we were being led along, or maybe not, we were being led along the path, I believed that we needed to back out of the minutia. Um, but the dots are still not connecting, and my worry is that we're out of time if we only have... So I would like to know, do we have one more vote on this budget?
I didn't get to answer. Go ahead.
Yeah, one, and then we get out of the process, but...
Right, um, yeah, so, and you do, in January. The January board meeting is when you really need to decide on a final budget proposal, a budget amount that you're taking to the voters. Tonight is simply a proposal to go forward for input on.
Jill?
Um, I think that, I recall we've called special board meetings when we haven't been at the place where we're in, so that if we didn't come to a, a vote, um, we have the ability to schedule additional special meetings with notice, um, to try to vote. And I, I guess I was going to say a lot of what I think Miriam said, and, um, when I joined the board, I was very concerned about the culture of the board and the board sort of being, um, led around by the administration, and, um, there wasn't a lot of transparency and accountability. And, I mean, I, I think that there's a culture evolving on the board that is about not just going along with stuff any longer without ha- without being informed about what it is you're voting on, so, um... And I, I support that move. So, I mean, part of me just gets confused every time we have these conversations about where is the data, where is the, where is the clear, you know, information, where is the stuff that supports this? We have it as a board, board priority, we have for two years now, and it seems, whether we're at the diversity and equity committee talking about data around how we're moving in that plan, or now we're talking about budget increases or decreases, and, you know, we only got involved in the minutia because we voted on something not having the transparent, sharing of information from the administration about what that would actually look like in the end. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Just a, okay, actually, Rebecca, you were...
Um, a lot of my thoughts have already been stated. I, I agree with Linda that, that the board process has been flawed, for sure, that, that the people who come and speak out are not representative of the entire district, absolutely. But to now be at this place where we're potentially voting on a budget that gives me no more information other than six hundred and thirty thousand dollars on whether that's going to be X number of teachers, or X number of paras, or half-day kindergarten, I think that's a great hypothetical. I can't support it as a board member, I certainly wouldn't support it as a taxpayer with this amount of increase as well. I mean, if this were like, oh, it's one percent, it's more or less the same things. Trust us, this is enormous amount of money without the meat behind it to say, we're increasing this, we're decreasing this, and here's why. And I understand that there's a message around sequestration and dollar, and cuts, and I understand some of that, but I need to know if this is the amount of money that we have to work with, this is how we're going to spend it. And that, I'm not seeing that with enough detail to be able to support right now.
Well, supporting what? I mean, we are putting a budget out for the public to comment on...
But, but I, I'm not seeing a budget, I'm sort of seeing this is the amount of money. You know, I, I wouldn't buy a house without seeing the house and seeing how many bedrooms it has, and, you know, are the floors solid? And I, this is sort of, trust us, that we're going to move the money around. We think here are four potential things that philosophically are all over the map. And I think before we can ask taxpayers to say, yes, absolutely, that seems like a great idea, I don't know what the great idea is.
So I have a question for you, so that I continue to try to understand this in, in relation to what some of the comments have been. Does this go back to the superintendent's evaluation in the long run? I mean, when you look, if, is, is this sort of model and this process of doing a budget, if you see, uh, and you essentially are placing your faith in the administration to make the best, um, decisions and not getting down the details, then the way this works is that, um, it's in... and not getting down the details, then the way this works is that it's in that superintendent evaluation process that you apply how you feel about what happened in the end? Is that do you understand what I'm saying?
But I but I think like maybe part of what I'm I'm going to try to translate a few things that I've heard here. One of which is when we just get presented this particular document that's up on the screen, what we get kind of what we what is said is here are in it's imperfect even in this version. You know, here are the goals that, you know, I'm translating from the board. Here are the goals of the district. And here are things that were put down on paper that fit those goals. And yet, you know, I need to kind of bring the money down to this particular level. But what we've missed all below is kind of what Rebecca was talking about, the house. You know, we're sort of saying, okay, our goals are to be energy efficient, so we're going to put in some more insulation. But we still don't know, you know, there's a missing picture of the entire house. And it's kind of the analogy that I'm hearing here. And if that's something that we're missing as a board and we think that the community will be missing in our presentation or it's something that we somehow aren't seeing, we know it seems to be coming through in a lot of different things that I'm hearing here from, you know, the board at this point in the way what has come, you know, through all this, we're still missing. What does the whole house look like? And if that is something that the administration, you know, is missing in this process and we're not able to really get it back out to the community and communicate, you know, I think that that would be something that, yes, it is, you know, we had real trouble this year. We brought on a new process, but, you know, while these this was the part of it that we saw what you were doing, we somehow missed a lot of it that really was that really supports that as well in just going to this other version.
And because it's a new process, I guess I am trying to understand how you deal with the whole data-informed decision-making issue, you know, the house that you're talking about, the details, but also not have go back to the way it was before.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out where that happy medium was. So I guess I was thinking out loud, to me, there has to be a guiding philosophy in how the superintendent is dealing with the budget, that that it's it's based on goals. It's based on a lot of what we're saying. But then looking down the road, I would say, then that's why I asked a question about the evaluation. Then you go back to the evaluation, you say, was this carried out in a way that along was this budget process and the result?
Yeah, I think I think that's that's, you know, it's a once again, now you brought another process into it. But, yeah, I think it's a way to fit it into your your thinking of that right now.
But it's a big picture, yeah.
Yeah, I I think you're right in what you're saying.
Okay.
Linda.
I think one of the things that's missing is some of the information that I got watching on Channel seventeen and helping with talking points that would have been helpful for people to have tonight.
We never actually got to do our presentation tonight.
Yeah, because there there are going with this. There are some talking points and there are some prior the priorities that led to this that you did a pretty good job of doing on television. So if you've missed it, you might want to watch Channel seventeen and and see that. Because that, I assume, was what we were going to see here tonight. We didn't. But that would have helped.
Are we still seeing that?
Well, well, let me ask. I mean, I had sort of asked before the start of tonight what you were planning presenting. And I what I got from you was you didn't say that there was something else. Is there something else?
Well, we've got the attachments that we got.
So there's not a PowerPoint. But, yes, we it all got turned around. I'd like.
Yeah, but go ahead.
Will I have the floor? Will I have the mic? So I need to back us up, and I need you to step in, and I need you to step in, Keith, as finance chair. But I need to back us up. When we, you know, when I hear you say that you didn't realize that you were going to come to December and and not know where we were, I I I think that we were very clear in the beginning and and at least in the Finance Committee. Maybe we didn't have those discussions at the board meeting itself. But certainly in the Finance Committee, when we brought this process to the Finance Committee and then it came to the board, we talked about the fact that first we start with a process that's very early in September. We get community input. We and there was a lot of change in the way that community input happened, which we'll deal with next year. But we did the best we could this year to get community input into what programs and functions and services people value and what they they value less. And all of that information, again, came to committees. Committees discussed it, distilled it, looked at it, and created a list of priorities that the administration was then asked to cost out and and layer on the administration's priorities. There are, if you go back in Planning Committee and in Finance Committee meetings in October and November, you'll find different memos from me that identify the commitments that the board has made and that identify, such as I mentioned, the restructuring, diversity equity, and also identify the priorities that have come out of those committees. And, you know, some of what you're discussing now is is feedback for David and me and how we could have present the visual differently. But I think we'd be in the same place as far as the information, although the visual could look a bit different. So that happened in October, went back to administration, came back to committees in November. November committees were asked to refine their priorities. All of that, all of those priorities in the areas of teaching and learning and diversity and equity and infrastructure and facilities. And and I hear you that we could reflect that perhaps differently on the sheet, exactly what those priorities were. But they're in the memos for you guys to have that the public can read on Board Docs. And we'll we'll see what we can do about changing this. They're they are exactly what's been driving the decision. When we did the TV show, and we'll have a a presentation for you at the hearing next week, we talked about, again, the outline of the process, the municipal statute, where we are in the process, what our mission statement is, what commitments, the commitment to diversity equity, the strategic plans and signed assurances, the Partnership for Change and facilities and capacity, the priorities of technology for twenty-first century, facilities and maintenance needs, the planning for Burlington High School in Edmonds, the annual capital maintenance costs, diversity and equity, redefining special education systems to include a multi-tiered system of supports, professional development to focus on differentiation, diversity and equity, high achievers in ELL, curriculum scope and common core and teacher evaluation. And what I'm hearing you say is tie that more into how these decisions were made. You need more detail on that. And what this budget accomplishes, meeting the needs of the increasing enrollment in Burlington schools, continued improvement of instruction and supporting all of our students in an equitable manner, meeting the needs of our students with English language needs and diversity, continued support for aging facilities for energy efficiency, safety and accessibility, and absorbing the reduced revenue due to federal, state and city cost shifts. We talked about that as well, and and we'll be talking some more about that as as we move forward. So and we had said from the beginning that when you come to December, it's not about family and consumer sciences versus Chinese teacher. It's about these priorities. And what I'm hearing you say tonight is you'd like a little bit more in the visual about how these particular areas under teaching and learning and diversity and equity and infrastructure and facilities, probably infrastructure and facilities is the clearest as to how it relates to it. But out of the others, especially teaching and learning, how it relates to those particular priorities. And we can we can change that. We can do that. But I I again, it's our first time through this budget process. I think remembering our conversations in September might be hard in December. But they were conversations that were being held at Finance and Planning and then brought to the board. So I hope that helps.
You asked you, I think you pointed to both Keith and I to ask for some kind of support.
Actually, it was David and Keith.
Okay, what I will say on the planning side, you know, I I agree with that. I think that we're hearing some things that people still feel like are missing. And this image to me that keeps coming back is Rebecca's of not seeing the house, only seeing, you know, maybe that we're adding insulation, you know? And that's what we're getting presented with here. You're going to spend this amount on the house, but it's got, you know, we're going to add a little more for the insulation. Seeing the bigger picture of the house is one thing I've heard in some ways because that also gives the relative understanding of some of these pieces. But I do agree with that. And I actually don't think we've heard a lot of tonight. Some people have a different view, but we haven't heard a lot of actually what you talked about, A for B, B for A.
Right.
Yeah, we haven't heard a lot about that, but translating goals. So I just wanted to say that kind of as my level of support. Liz?
I appreciate your analysis of the house, Rebecca, but I'd just like to call it what it is. Could we please see a budget? Because I don't think we've seen a budget. And I I don't know if you have a budget you were going to show us, but I understood that this is not all the expenditure categories in the budget, so I'm confused about why we don't have a budget.
I will just second that that was a piece of input that I heard from Ward Six as well, which was where's the actual budget presented, which.
Well, Ward Six was early.
I I understand, but that was the comment also that came from them. Why they said it, it wasn't there. Whether or not it's early or not was just a, you know.
Are you Alan, are you referring to this piece?
See, no, no, with the, you know, I think that people still want to, you know, that while people aren't getting into the weeds, you still do need to see what the budget is as what as Liz is just pointing out, the budget.
I mean, we see a budget every month in Finance Committee that's for fiscal year fourteen. Can we see a budget for fiscal year fifteen that looks like the budget that we're going to pass eventually?
Well, the answer is as soon as you say what you want the budget to be and be presented. That's what we're trying to work out in this process. We've had now two months and there hasn't been a single a single thought outside of ITC and and technology on any any program additions with any indication of what it looks like so it could be priced. Nothing came out of curriculum. Nothing came out of diversity and equity.
I I I I'm sorry, that that's not true. Stuff did come out of curriculum.
Are you saying we're supposed to come up with a budget?
Just a second.
Are we supposed to come up with a budget?
Program goals, here are your goals. What does the program goal look like?
Where's the budget?
I.
I can't price something. I don't know what you mean. If you say you want to increase this, what does that look like? Are we talking about hiring some people? Are we talking about there was nothing came out of it? There was no reductions came from any committee?
Just David, one one second here. I think what the simple statement is is that every month you do present a budget to Finance. We with what we've put up here, we could create a pro forma that would incorporate what is up there into something that is the full the full view, right? Okay, I mean, and I think that's one of the difficulties is we're sitting here saying, we're going to present this to the community. And, you know, and it will exist, but we all we don't have that in front of us. It's just it's a difficulty for us to to kind of see that. And I and I think Patrick's point is, you know, curriculum did make some statements. And I think that there wasn't, you know, and I don't know exactly. Patrick made a point at Planning Committee that one of the difficulties with curriculum is they made some various they made some strong priority statements. Pricing something from ITC is very straightforward. Pricing something that Patrick, I can't remember, you framed it how at Planning Committee? Because you framed that point you framed that point for that well.
That's exactly right. It's easier to tell it's easier to tell how much upkeep on a building is going to be than it is to have something. This was the and we brought this up early in this process that we felt for curriculum that this was not a very good process. Because when we say something like one of our curricular priorities is rethinking what MTSS is and and moving toward a model of differentiated differentiated education where the teachers are really going to understand the individualized needs of the students in their classroom and tailor their instruction and their materials to meet those needs, all right? If you want me to go out and find, you know, bring in training, I can make those phone calls, but that's not my responsibility. But to say that we didn't put forward our priorities and that we didn't say what was important to us is 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 not true. We were we were clear in it. And the question I asked at Planning last time is how is that? How are how are those 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 priorities reflected in the budget? And I still don't see how those those, you know, we haven't enumerated six different priorities. How are they reflected in the budget? And I don't know that. If you said these are supposed to be, you know, these go from what our 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 board goals and what our committee goals are, great. Here are our committee goals. How are those committee goals reflected specifically in, you know, moving from draft one to draft two to draft three? And and how were those determinations made? And, yes, I don't know how much it would cost. And I'm now I'm picking on differentiated education. I don't know how much it would cost. But we've been we've been clear in articulating that this is a model that we view as something that's important. And to say that it's we didn't bring it forward just couldn't be further from the truth.
So one potential is to in presenting it differently, as I said, the way we presented it didn't didn't work for you. I got that. So I'd like to work at a different way of presenting how what's on the draft two point two addresses the exact priorities that are that were identified there. I mean, the priorities were guiding the decision. So it's to me, it's a case of the presentation didn't didn't work for you, wasn't wasn't complete for you.
I mean, we have, yeah, I mean, we had six articulated priorities. I'm just curious how those how those move into a decision for an eighty thousand dollar cut in student behavioral supports? Which one of those priorities were reflected in there? Maybe none of them, maybe it's something else that we don't need to know. But, I mean, what what guided that?
Miriam and then Keith.
So Jeannie, one of my concerns is I'm hearing from you that you think that it's a presentation issue. You just need to present it differently.
Well, this sheet doesn't do it.
I understand. But my concern is that I feel like what we're saying is it's not just a presentation issue. I mean, perhaps you have looked carefully at everything and there's a rationale for each of the changes that are on here, and it's closely tied. And if that's true, then maybe it's a presentation issue. But David's comment makes me think it isn't just a presentation issue. David's comment makes me think that somehow something was lost in the translation of the priorities and the budget. And that's my concern. I would give an example of the MTSS system, which was one of the curriculum's committee's priorities. And I asked several times, how much money will it take to do this? And I was pretty much assured that we could do it for the same budget we have now. So I thought, okay, well, maybe maybe that's true. But now I see a budget with a lot of decreases in it. So I there's no, you know, in a sense, we we tried. We did all we could to put it forth. And in fact, have been told the specifics are not yours. It's not up to you to go to the specifics and how much it's going to cost. So I guess, you know, my concern is I think that what we're asking for is more than just a different presentation.
Keith.
Well, we've increased our general fund expenditure seven point seven percent. Seven point seven percent, which is almost five million dollars. This budget is five million dollars more than what we asked for last year. And how we presented would be top most people we and we have gone on given numbers. Most of them weren't right, okay? And but and people really didn't want to see the numbers. I understand that you want to see general function numbers. I think that's something we can do next Monday and Thursday. And we can talk about percentage increases. But we have, if you look at our budget, the total number at the bottom line is sixty-seven million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine. It's a general fund expenditures. That's a that's a big increase over last year. And I haven't heard people talk about what it is they want, what functions they don't think we can no longer afford. So I'm assuming that's a number that we that we what we what you're saying is you want to know what it looks like. And where where the increases are, do they reflect our priorities?
I I don't know that that we've been asked to say, what do we want to cut? I thought we were just told that it's not our role to say what we want to cut. I mean, I could say, I think we should have one principal at Edmunds. Edmunds Elementary and Edmunds Middle should have one principal. So but I've been told that's not what I'm supposed to be saying. So I I don't I don't feel an opportunity to say what we should cut. And I don't even know that I have the information to do that. So I think our budget is high, but you guys have explained a lot about why that is. We have to cover a debt cost. We have sequestration. We have up enrollment. And you've explained most of that five million dollars.
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't even touch the priority thing. So that that's where the disconnect is for me.
So we got to create the store, we got to create the information that makes people understand what this is, what they're good. As you say, what what they're buying, because that's what they really it's really connects with them.
But it's not just the people, it's us. It's the decision makers.
Well, I'm assuming you're part of the people.
I don't I speak for myself, I don't understand.
Okay, you that's what we have to do.
And and it's not just about the increases or the decreases. It's about it's about the budget as a as a whole. I mean, maybe I think that we should cut our budget by five million instead of add five million dollars to to the budget. It's not about explain the increases. It's about explain the changes that are going on in the budget and and what motivated how how those decisions were 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 reached, whether they're cuts, whether they're whether they're addition or, yeah, additions.
Miriam.
I mean, I I feel at this point, given the time frame, I would like to put a motion on the table that we level fund the budget and that we cover all the things that we covered last year, no more, no less, and that we work next year on, you know, going forward and coming up with new priorities. I mean, I feel like at this point, in a sense, we've almost done that because it's not that.
So you don't mean level fund, you mean carry the dirt.
Carry over. So there would be an increase, yes, but that we maintain all. But that we maintain all the programs and everything that we're doing, we keep the funding as it is. We simply say that's where we've gotta go. But we still direct the administration within that. We'd like to see you change the MTSS system. We'd like to see you try and do the diversity and equity goals. But we just wanna do it with the same amount of budget.
Just one second, I mean, the, that would, I mean, right now, the motion on the floor, so, you know, we're clear is that we present to the community a budget that would, um, you know, increase equalized pupil spending six point nine percent. And that is, you know, we're kind of seeing, you know, the changes at the top, that's kind of what that other page reflects to show that. Um, that would be the motion on the table. You would actually be making-
Right, so I guess I-
To the present, just, just presenting to the community, because it's not the approved budget, is to present to the community forecom a different budget level than what the Finance Committee recommend, and what the Finance Committee goal was, which is what the Planning Committee put forward as a motion tonight. I just wanna point out that, and just, but one, but one second, Miriam. I, I wanna explain, if what you're saying is, you know, to that, it would have to be a full amendment, cause there is a motion on the table.
Right.
Um, and I wanna give you a second actually to think about if that's appropriate, cause Linda was about to say something in that.
Yeah, 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 so let me think.
Okay, yeah, Linda.
I'm just saying, I, I wanna be clear, does she really understand what she's-
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanted-
Could we speak to what you said?
Be- because we gave raises to teachers, we have some, that means draconian cuts.
No, no, she's, she's talking, she's talking about rolling it forward, Linda. She's not talking about zero percent increase to student funding. She's talking about expenditures, just rolling forward with the new wage scale with etcetera.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not talking about touching that. I'm just talking about simply then saying our direction would, well-
I wanna get it for Linda. Ben, had a-
Okay, then, then I still would like to say, I, I guess I have some really strong feelings as far as process is concerned in that we trust, we, we have committees, we run a committee kind of board. We have a Finance Committee that has put in hours pulling this together, pulling up the stuff, and going and looking at all of the possible input from the community and so on. And I know if I was on the Finance Committee, I'd say, what's the point? I mean, we have to trust the committees that, and the committee structure. And if you don't, if that's of concern to you, I think you should be on that committee. And if you're not on that committee, maybe next year you need to be. But, but the lack, this shows to me a lack of trust of the, the other board members in the committee.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty strong statement, I think there's some valid points that can be made, but it's-
Well, I think what, what, it's a pretty strong statement to say, let's just bag what everybody's put in and-
Point of order, order of order.
Yeah, a second.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, speak to the motion, yeah.
So, um, I'd even like to call the question, or if there's-
Well, there's no second to the motion, yeah.
No, I, I didn't make any change to them.
No, to the original motion, no, to the original motion, there was a second.
Yeah, we wanna be discussing it.
Yeah, but now Liz-
Are we talking about our motion?
Just a second, Liz, just a second. Liz, did you call the question?
I would like to call the question.
So, I have to remember right, a call the question, if there's a second, then-
It's gonna be a two thirds vote.
Then it's a two thirds vote. That would take us to the vote on, on the motion that's up the table.
What, could you repeat the motion?
Okay, just a second, first off, let me call, the question has been called, and I forget point of order. Do I need a second on a call of the question?
Did you?
Yes.
There is a second by, by Keith Philsbury. And the motion on the table is, Keith, do you just wanna reread it, or should I?
Uh, to, motion to present budget proposal for discussion based upon-
Budget, budget proposal to the public.
To the public, okay.
Keep going.
To the, to the public for discussion based upon the financial goal of six point nine percent education spending increase with more detail on how this budget meets the identified priorities.
And a call of the question is not debatable, it requires a two thirds vote. So therefore, and what call the question would do, would stop debate on the question and we would vote immediately on the motion on the table. Since this requires a two thirds vote, um, I will ask for a show of hands. All in favor of calling the question, raise their hand. All opposed? So the vote is eleven to one on calling the question on this. And, um, I, I just wanna point out, Ben, unfortunately, I had, I recognized Liz who called the question.
The students.
What?
How did the students vote?
Um, yeah, I guess I should take, you know, students can vote on whether or not to call the question as well, if you like.
Yeah, how did you vote?
How did you vote?
It was affirmative.
Yeah, they've all, they voted to call the question as well. Um, so now, the question on the table is the motion to present the budget proposal to the public for discussion based upon the financial goal of a six point nine percent education spending increase with more deal, detail on how this budget meets the identified priorities. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I guess I'd probably do a show of hands here. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All opposed?
And one student.
And one student. One, two, three, four. So the vote is-
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Okay, I understand, in general, I think abstentions really should be for, there are times, there are boards which say there can't be abstentions, they will allow for the abstention, but in general-
If he clarifies for the record, I'm abstaining because I felt there was more information I needed that I don't have at this time to determine my vote.
So, this does pass seven to four with one abstention, one student voting for, and I guess one student voting against? So therefore, this is what will be presented. I think what I would just, and just say, as I think we've heard, a fairly long debate about certain things that work and did not work, that we feel are important for the community. Um, and our first budget presentation is next Monday, so I think, you know, hopefully we can incorporate a lot of the concerns that we, that we heard during this debate. Just a, uh, yeah, Jill.
I'm assuming it's too late for a friendly amendment?
Yeah, the motion was made and passed.
Can I make a motion?
You, people can make a motion, make motions.
No, I mean, the motion I wanted to make is that it, for me, it wasn't, all of that dialogue wasn't just about, um, adding the priorities, it was about adding the meat of the budget, the detail.
I, that was what, I mean-
I mean, that's feedback that we got, but, but I, I guess I missed that when we did the vote, calling the vote, that then we weren't gonna be able to actually change the language, so that-
Well, it, it's only a particular, only the particular budget, as far as all the information that, and all the concerns that board members were expressing about what was missing, what they didn't see, the connections they weren't making, whatever it may have been, um, what I can say is, you know, part of what we're voicing is, I think, what we feel is a community need as well. And I think that's important for the administration, working with the board to have ready for Monday night.
I guess I'd just point out that during this dialogue, this forwarded all of us an example of a budget where the meat is, is transparent.
Maybe Liz could forward it to the administration?
I did.
Okay, good. What you're thinking of.
Oh, 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 a, a particular motion?
That's a sample from another organization.
It's a sample budget.
Oh, okay.
Sample budget, but we're not at that point.
Okay. Bernie, you wanna decide?
No.
Okay. Henry.
So, commonly during the Monday, is there gonna be something more presented to the-
Like anybody who's there, other than what we're looking at right now?
Yes.
Yes, there is a full presentation that's put together between this meeting and the first public comment, um, public session. That concludes the Planning Committee's report. Jill.
Um, I just have a question maybe for you, Keith, since you've been around forever.
Twenty years he's got a plaque for him.
So I recall last year there being a strong interest that the board be unanimous in its support of the budget. And I get the sense that that might not be how this all breaks down in the end. Have, have we ever not, as a board, accepted the budget that was presented to us?
I don't, we've had split boards.
And then what happens? Or Alan, you could answer this too, I just wanted to know historically.
What happens is, the, whatever the polls, everybody goes out and works on it and oftentimes people pick up, they will been, um, who didn't support it, either don't say anything or they, they usually are the team, I guess.
Well, and, you know, at some point, before we put a budget in that goes to the voters, the board will have to actually approve that again, it'll be a separate vote. And, you know, at that vote, we create a board decision, and we do try to strive for as much of unanimity as possible. When we've been on the board, there have been times when it hasn't been unanimous, but it is a board decision.
We had a very close vote on technology before the, oh, two years ago, if you remember.
And, and we, so we could not vote the budget not in time for it to be on the ballot?
We can have a very, what?
So we are, by, by not voting in support of it, we would, we could back up to it not being on the ballot, right?
You ultimately have to have a budget to take to town meeting.
We do.
Right, we do.
You have no choice on that.
Yeah, and so we will have to come to something, it's something-
And I just, just one other comment. I don't recall discussing the results of the, um, survey that went out to the public at a board level. I know in our Diversity and Equity Subcommittee, we basically, I think, um, the board members were sort of in agreement that it wasn't valid, that there weren't enough responses, and then it didn't, it couldn't necessarily represent. So I'm uncomfortable saying that we used that survey to inform this budget.
I would just say, Jill, that we had the results presented to us, we did talk about them at the board level. There was the opportunity to say that. So if that's what you feel, I think there, there absolutely was a time at which that would have been appropriate, which was back in probably September, October.
Yeah, when we talked about it, I think after Diversity Equity. I just, G D made it a very significant piece of her defense of the budget was the, uh-
Yeah, and I think that, I think if you go back, there, it was presented and it was on board agenda, so.
Thought it was accepted.
I just wanna add to that, that I tried this fall to go to every meeting that on the agenda, David was gonna speak about the budget process. And, um, it was on the agenda and different committees handled it differently. And so some committees spent more time talking about the process and talking, coming up with, um, you know, feedback for the process, and, and some committees spent less time. But it was there all fall.
Keith, actually, Finance Committee?
Yeah, okay. One of the things, you know, that every year we have a twenty million dollar capital improvement fund that voters gave, gave us several years ago, as something that we could utilize for capital improvements in our district. One of the things that we're finding out, we know now, is that because of the bond rating of the, of the city, we are paying a significantly higher interest rate than we could get if we went to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. And we have, we have been notified that the Water Department has been given permission by the City Council to do that, to go to, to go to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank to, uh, to fund some of their bonds at a much, at a much lower rate. And, um, basically, the, uh, the rate of the city is about, is about, uh, six point two five. And the bond bank is between three and four percent. So, it's a significant difference over a twenty year period in, in paying back our bonds. So, um, the Finance Committee, uh, voted a motion to ask the City Council if, to allow us to go to the, uh, the bond bank. And I'm going to move that motion. Move to pursue, um, move to ask City Council to authorize a separate bond for the district with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for the fiscal fifteen bond, and also to pursue charter change language that frees the district to go directly to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank using its own more favorable credit rating.
Is there a second? Linda? Is there any discussion of this motion? Liz?
Well, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, I'd like to discuss it. Um, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to separate option one and option two. And the reason I'd like to make that friendly amendment is because, um, I'm not in support of asking the City Council to change the charter language that would, I think, have the result of pitting, um, in some cases, the school board against the City Council, because we would have the separate legal authority to go to the voters with our own bond. And that would decouple that authority from the City Council. And we've been asked, in fact, um, Bob Rustin came to the Finance Committee and asked the, the school board to be cooperative and collaborative with the city in terms of our timing for putting bonds before the voters. And I think in the spirit of collaboration, it would be a mistake to ask the City Council to make a charter change that would give us the legal authority to separate ourselves. And future boards could decide to go to the voters with a bond for school districts' interests while the city needs to go to the voters for city interests. And I would hate to, I don't wanna be on a board that sets that, those events in motion. I think it's, um, I think it's very kind of parochial and territorial, and I don't wanna be in the position of saying to the voters that, you know, we're gonna take this step to, um, get the authority to do that.
Bernie?
One thing the city still has the available, or the ability to do is still put us on a ballot. It, it, the bonding is, is another item. We still have to go to City Council for any bond item on a ballot, so.
Then what's the, then what's the point of doing all this work and spending this money if we still have to go to the City Council? Or option two, a change, why, why change, why make a charter change to have the separate authority?
So we don't have to go to the City Council every time for every bond?
Exactly, so that's my concern, is that I think if we don't have to go to the City Council, then it kinda says we, um, there may be times when we don't wanna work in the spirit of collaboration, and we may be in conflict with the City Council. And I'd rather set up a process where we work together with the City Council to assess the assets of the city, which includes up the district and the city's buildings and projects.
So, Keith, let me ask you a-
I agree with that, what he just said. They have to put the bond on the ballot. But right now, we're required to go, for the, for the city to do our bonding for us. What we're asking for is to have a charter change so that, that we, the city doesn't have to do the bonding for us. But they do have to, there has to be an agreement that they, that we can put the bond on the ballot. I think you're confusing the two. There's a separate, what this is doing is saying, you know, the city, the city had to approve the Water Department putting the bond on the ballot.
Right.
And then it had to prove that they could go to another place, source to get the bond. We're just asking that if we put a bond on the ballot, if, if they allow us to put a bond on the ballot, then we don't have to go through the city if their rate is so much higher than the Vermont, uh, Bond Bank.
It's my understanding that the Water Department did option one, which is to go to the Municipal Bond Bank, separately with the city's permission. But the charter change committee, the charter change language, I understand after my conversation with Bob Rustin, would decouple us, like, C C T A can go float a bond right now and go to the Burlington voters without the City Council's approval.
But we can't.
Well, but the charter change language would have that result. Otherwise, what's the difference between the two options?
Well, just because you put a bond on the ballot doesn't mean that you are, you're, you're having to go through the, uh, city bonding mechanism for, to get your interest. Go out and get another bond if you can get one more favorable to you.
Right, but option one gives us, which I support, gives us the ability to go with a separate bond to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank.
And Keith, let me speak a little bit also to what I understood from the motion that was, that was coming out of Finance. My understanding was, I didn't understand that there was any charter change that we were looking to do. I, my understanding is that we were to work with the city so that the, we could achieve the most advantageous rate, which is the purpose of this motion. That's how I understood the purpose of the motion, is that we would work with the city to be able to get the most advantageous rate.
The language of the motion comes directly from the minutes.
Well, I've read right from the minutes. And you took them.
Well, and they've been noted. I mean, option two clearly says an override of state statutes would free the district to go directly to the bank and obtain the, um, more favorable- and obtain the more favorable credit ra, rating of the bank. So that says to me that we would have the ability to just go negotiate and set up the bond and purchase, you know, the costs of, of putting the bond forward without the city's involvement.
I mean, that's what every other district, almost every other district, it would state that.
Yeah, exactly, that's what every other district does, they would give us that authority and I'm not in support of that, so I was asking if we could decouple the motion.
Just a piece of, two pieces of information in the last week. The city is, is interested in decoupling and all sorts of things in the last week. They, for example, indicated to us that they were going to cut a half our pilot funds for this year. That's how much cooperation we're dealing with at the moment. So as we want to get warm and fuzzy with the city, or keep warm and fuzzy with the city, we need to be realistic about how the city's behaving towards us. And there is another instance, I can't remember detail, but there's two examples in the last week where the city is decoupling from the district. Not, notwithstanding the fact that in the charter it says specifically, the city will fund all construction of the school district. And to my knowledge, it's never done that in 50 years, never funded. The city has not funded construction according to the charter.
So, but then just let me ask you, Liz asked, would it be friendly to decouple the two items?
The first half and the second half?
The first half and the second half.
Before half and after half?
I, I, I guess it's up to board, I, I don't, I don't want to cause.
Well, you break the motion.
You're the motion maker.
She's asking, would you be willing to separate this into two motions? A motion to, to city council to separate, for a separate bond for the district and then also a separate vote on the charter change language. And Linda, you were the second, would you have them to be separated into two motions?
What did you just say? You're willing to let it be separated?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go along with it, but I personally think we shouldn't decouple.
So, we've now separated this into two motions and I've put the first motion on the table, which is to ask city council to authorize a separate bond for the district with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for the FY '15 bond. That's the motion on the table. Any discussion related to that motion?
Just a question of clarification, the, the language, and I'm way outside my area of expertise here, so if this is a really stupid question, I apologize. To authorize a separate bond for the district, is that the same as an additional bond?
No, it's the $2 million that we have authorized by city charter.
Moving it from what place?
Moving it from city issuance, yes.
Okay, that's, that's how I, that's what I, yes, okay, that, that answers my question, thank you.
Sorry, a little information, just so that we're clear what we're talking about here. Currently, the, the bond we went up for a few months ago with the city was, was a $10 million bond, which let's say.
Two, $2 million.
This, the bond that the city went down for, this, this, two months ago was $10 million, of which $2 million was for the school and $8 million was for the city. There was a cost going off, we were, we were hitting with something like $22,000 was our share. And, and given the conversations I've had with Bob Ruston's recent years, yesterday morning at nine o'clock, it's clear that they are wanting to share the costs, share the costs that they have for the city, for the district to pick up those costs. So their interest in separating out their $10 million bond into an $8 million and $2 million may be not very great. And the reason why we are paying more is that we are going, when we're in a combined bond with them, we are getting their credit rating, which you know the city is very poor credit rating right now. And what a lot of people don't know, including Rich Goodwin, the assistant GAO, who, who I had to correct in his bond issuance statement, he said that the, he totally misunderstood the fact that our credit rating is not the rating of the city, it's the rating of the state. So a school district is a creation of the state, the state stands behind our expenditures. And so that's why we can, we can be, get a much more favorable rating. And so by relying on the goodwill of the city, which is always a good thing to do if you can get it, that's the risk we're taking, is that they'll say, we don't want to bear the full cost of the $10 million, of our, of our $8 million bond, we must have it together, because that's the direction they've been going for the 12 months that I'm in here. So it's a, it's a financial cost.
May I ask a question, clarification, so if we split it, if we split it, do we even need the first one? Like, if we just change the charter change language, then do we, why do we need to go ask them?
I would say this, until the charter change language were actually put onto a ballot and passed, yes, we would, in which is unlikely, it would all hap, it's quite possible it might not all happen, by, in time to issue the fiscal '15 bond, yes, we would still need the first one.
Okay, and then my other just thought is, should we be more specific, as Patrick was saying, and actually specifically talk about the specific bond that we want to do this with, the annual $2 million bond? Is there any value to doing that in terms of not letting people know that we're overstepping our boundaries or trying to do this, that it's a specific thing that we've been doing for years, or is that not, I, I guess I.
I, I think that actually is, but I think the language incorporates the fact that it is the.
That, so that's clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Liz?
So I just wanted to, to clarify, I know bond language is really complicated and boring and for some people. So option one, so basically, right now, when we, when we are bonding, we're doing it through the city. And so the city's credit rating is bad, so we're paying more because you have to pay costs for a bond. So option one, the water district did this, we could go to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, which is the state's faith and credit, and we would get lower costs, we would get a lower rating, we do need the city's permission to do that. There is, there's really not a reason, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason, but the city has an interest in supporting us in that request because it means that we're not passing costs on to the city's taxpayers. So the city has every good reason to give us the authority to go to the Vermont Municipal Bank, Bond Bank. They have no real interest in keeping us tied to their expensive bond, that doesn't do anybody any good. They don't get anything from it, their taxpayers don't get anything from it. So option one gives us a great option to bring our costs down. Option two actually changes the charter change, makes a charter change in the city's ordinances that says we don't even need the city's permission to go to the Vermont Municipal Bank. That is a, um, symbolically, that is a more hostile move. That is like saying, we're over here running our own fiefdom, you're over there running your fiefdom, and we don't really have to talk to you.
I think, you can, that's, yeah, that's the other motion.
I just want to, you know, put it in plain language that, you know, I really support option one, I think it's a great option, I think what we get is what we need.
Is there any other debate on the first motion, which is to ask city council to authorize a separate bond for the district with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for the fiscal '15 bond? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. The motion now on the table is for, to pursue charter change language that frees the district to go directly to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank using its more favorable credit rating. Ben?
Two things I would like to know, whether there's a practical difference in using the word frees versus the word that allows? So that we have the option as opposed to charter language that severs the relationship, as opposed to something that empowers us to go our own way when we choose, but we don't have to because, similar to what Liz was explaining, and thanks Liz, it's, it is a world I'm not familiar with, that there may be instances where it could be beneficial to one or the other to have that. So I just don't know, you know, I don't know how these things function enough to, to say I would like to propose the word allows because that might not be useful, but if it is, to throw that out there. And I don't know if we need to have, you know, using its own more favorable credit rating, is that just for intent or is that, you know, for motion?
I mean, I.
My main question is about frees versus allows, is there a practical usefulness for changing that?
I, I don't think there is, but it's just, it's just people who are just making, making a motion, you know, no formal legal, legal basis here. The intent is to allow the district to go directly to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank.
Well, then I'd offer the friendly amendment to substitute the word allows for frees.
Changing it, you know.
Okay. Changing the word to allows. The only thing I, I might ask, there is the language about its own more favorable credit rating, I think that was, that was our justification, I mean, I don't.
That's just that. That's just, that's just.
Can we just, I mean, could I just strike?
Okay, but, um.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, change them, flip back to the.
You know, we're not, we're not lawyers here, we're just.
Rebecca?
Thanks for the clarification about that. If we, if we've asked authorization to do it once in the motion that we just passed, then couldn't we theoretically do it again and therefore we don't have to sort of do the charter change to say we're separating ourselves? And if and when the need arises again, we will ask if we can do it again. Is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that again?
No, we would have no reason that we couldn't.
I, I just want to explain why I'm going to vote for this and that's because it's, since I've been on the board, there have been a number of shifts in costs from the city to the school board budget. And I feel like the city sort of already symbolically is decoupling itself from us. So I feel like this gives us more options to continue to fund a budget that has seen some costs from the city budget shifted into it.
Point of order, I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's a second motion, it was a second motion.
When you split the two.
Wait, wait, please, please, there was, there were, the motions were, you asked for the motion on a friendly basis to be split.
Right, but I didn't hear someone make another motion.
And they were split and into two motions, which were both still on the table.
Oh, but the first motion stands as the motion for the second, is that what you're saying?
My understanding, Liz, is that we, we automatically had to, my understanding is we automatically had to run the table. We voted on the first, the second was already on the table.
So I thought I was speaking.
I was supposed to try and turn her to the right.
Yeah, yeah, so we're speaking to the, we're speaking to the charter change, we're, we're speaking to the charter change, yeah.
Do we need a second on the second part?
No, Linda would have, Linda had agreed to.
Oh.
Bernie?
Yeah, I think we also need to remember that the city will be, the council will be the one who will do the charter change. So the city will have the opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves and it also has to go with legislature as well. It, it's just not us doing it.
Sorry, it's just not what?
It's just not us unilaterally doing it, it's got to go through the city council.
As far as charter change goes, having seen the workings of the city council, I'm not, I'm not in favor of passing a motion saying that we should be working on a charter change right now. I think we could certainly broach it with the discussion and the board could come back to it a later time when we had a better idea of how the city might view it. And it's recent experience that keeps me from wanting to put forward charter change language right now with the city.
What makes you think it's going to get any better?
Sorry?
I, I think, I think you're gambling on that one, I mean.
I, you, gotcha?
I just have, I just have to say that, that we hear from the city that they, that we keep raising our tax, our property tax and that they haven't for the last six or seven years yet. What we also know is that they, they view us as a way of, I've heard the term from city employees, catch cow. Now, I, I, I've never had any of those negative feelings, but as they tried to take away our, our, our payment of taxes, when we, by the charter, are supposed to be getting that for education. And as they shifted the funding from pension, when we didn't have, you know, we didn't really have any say at all in what the pension benefits were going to be, it seems that they have kind of utilized, they use it as a cash pool, which they, they benefited from by using our cash pool and we're supposed to separate. And of course, they're not anxious to have to separate, even though the state's saying we need to separate our cash pool. I think this is a way of suggesting to the taxpayers that we are trying to, we are trying to, to maintain our budgets, to keep our budgets as, as lean as possible. And one of the, one of the ways is increasing the cost of our budgets is the, the interest rates on our bonds. And we have, we have a big construction coming up in a couple of years and I think we need to be thinking ahead of that real cost to the taxpayer. And city council is going to make a decision on this and they may or may not, may not agree with it, but they'll at least have had the discussion with us as to why we want it.
Okay. Ben, have you guys say something? You had your hand up.
Take that.
Okay. Liz?
I think that we rely on the city to pass our budget and recommend it to the voters. And I think if we take actions that indicate we're not collaborative like this, then we're going to, and we rely on them to approve things like real estate purchases, leases, I think if we take this step, I don't agree that, that we've blindly had to absorb costs. I think if there are areas like the pension and like these other areas, you know, that there's an opportunity to go and talk to the city about how to create systems that make those impacts more reasonable. And, you know, I don't think tit for tat is a good policy approach. So I think if we take this step, it kind of sets in motion a dynamic that says, you know, we're a creature of the state, we're going to go take care of ourselves, but we're going to tax your citizens. And now we've created another area of autonomy where we're going to tax your citizens when and where we feel like we need to, whether we're competing with you or not. I just think that we, it's easy to interpret an action like this as unfriendly action and, and I think it's going in the wrong direction. Bob Ruston asked the finance committee to operate in the spirit of collaboration, he's a new city treasurer. And so given that we have that request on the floor at this time, I think this would be going in the other direction.
Meredith?
Yeah, I, I think we're the same citizens, you know, we're citizens, you know, we have the same citizens. So if the citizens get a better rate over here, let's go for it, you know? And they're paying for it, you know, with the city, with the school, and it's all the same taxpayers. So I don't see that we're, you know, damaging our relationship. Maybe I'm naive, I just see it as, you know, beneficial to the same taxpayers to have a better rate in this case, to support, you know, major high school renovation for Gen.
Ben and then Liz?
Okay, I'm back. So here, so here's where I'm at on this, I'm sorry, because it's late. The appeal to this to me is the message it sends to the community that we as a district, as a, as a board and the district are taking all actions we possibly can to save what money we can where we can. And one of them is the issue about paying less interest because of our more favorable credit rating. If we can, you know, I'm, because not having this doesn't preclude, like you said earlier, our asking any time on any given bond for us to be able to pursue it separately with the, with the municipal bond bank. If we can have a discussion with Bob and others from the city with the understanding that they would be supportive of our future requests to do that, then we get to be able to say, you know, to the community, we're going to, when we have the opportunity for bonding, we're going to go do it. If, if the credit rating is better for us on our own, we're going to seek to do that. And we're going to ask for the city to approve that and we're doing work ahead of time for the administration to support us in that. And that may be a way to avoid any, you know, implication of non-cooperation. Because otherwise, I, I get that, if they're willing to work with us, that's fine. If not, well, you know, we should do what's the most fiscally responsible thing to do. If we still have that option without this language and we can have the discussion with the city and have that come back to us, because we can pass language like this anytime, it's not a pressing issue. We can pass that at the next meeting if the city doesn't indicate that they're happy with, are wanting to go out on our own and requesting that on any given bond.
Liz?
So I was just going to respond to Meredith, that option one does everything that you said. And that, I mean, option two, it's nice to think that we're all going to be friendly now, but I think in the future, we don't know who's going to be sitting on the board and we don't know who's going to be sitting on the council. And so it's, it's creating a part of a governing infrastructure that decouples powers and can pit them against each other. So I think what we're saying is very serious, that we're going to create that governing infra, a new governing infrastructure. We're asking you to do that. And by asking the city council to do that, I think it's sending a message to say, you know, we want to operate more autonomously in governing the school district. And, you know, that's, that's a, I guess, a move that I am uncomfortable with, you know, given the relationship that we have, have had and I think that we need to preserve.
Yeah, Meredith?
You don't want me to say?
No, I, I, I think that one thing, you know, we're having a debate, I guess my question would be, you know, is there, we've heard a number of points back and forth, I think that, I want to make sure that, you know, at this point, we keep moving things forward because it's. because it's more of a decision for us where, as opposed to a discussion where we're really trying to provide perhaps more direction to the administration.
I just want to again emphasize it's the same ta, taxpayers and the bond. The city's credit rating is not anything the school district had any role in. And so, you know, we have our current rating that, you know, the city has its credit rating. To me, it just comes down to the taxpayers saving money in the long run. So why not let them save as much and plenty as they can, you know, in this, um, by allowing us to go off and being able to, you know, have our own bond. What?
Okay, Patrick?
Just wondering if it makes, and again, my naivety for this, um, if it makes sense to, to table this and it's not a motion, but to, to table this and talk to some of the folks in the city and say, hey, how would this be received?
So.
I, I don't know. I don't know enough about the, the politics. And I get along with the, the two commissioners from my board fine. I would be fine chatting with them about it and I just, I don't, I don't know why we couldn't do that. Maybe there's a, or Bob Rustin, is that the name?
Bob Rustin.
Rustin, maybe talking with him, see how it's received.
I'm just thinking, so, I mean, you would actually make a mo, motion to?
I'm not making any motion.
Okay.
I, I will talk about things that I know what I'm talking about. This is not one of them.
Okay, Keith and then Linda.
Well, I'm not as optimistic as Liz about the relationship with the city. I've heard Bob, Bob, we've had Bobs before come. We've heard that over and over again. And it tends to end up the, the board having to go for a tax increase. And we don't hear a lot of politicians in, on city council really loudly say, we need to support those schools. Bernie used to, Bernie used to. We had a good relationship. And since then, it's gone downhill. And when Muro would not, when he told me that the numbers were too large two years ago, uh, and last year he didn't like our numbers, I'm thinking, okay, you know, we, we are very important to the vitality of this city. The taxpayers wanted to support the board and what the board is doing and will if they get, if they believe in what we're doing. And I think this gives us, uh, a little bit more credibility that we're working for them. And city council may not like it and they may not approve it, but at least we've shown that we have taken the initiative to do something to improve the situation for our budget. Because we're the ones that have to go out and explain our budget every year. And they, and we're the ones that have to face the, uh, the criticism, et cetera. But, and, and like we heard tonight, explain it, explain to, what's this budget, what's this budget look like? And I'm sure we're going to do that again this year. We, well, I've done it for 22 years. And I haven't heard a lot of city councilors come and say, great job Keith, we love what you're doing. They may, I know Vince sometimes writes a letter once in a while in support of the schools at the very end. But very few other councilors are very vocal about it. And so I think the school board has to take the initiative in showing that we are good managers of our budget. And that's, that's why I think the finance committee put this motion on the floor for your consideration.
Linda?
I want to call a question.
Linda's called the question. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Kathy. All in favor of calling the question, which is to vote on the, um, the motion to go to, uh, to basically to pursue charter change language. Uh, I guess I just asked for a show of hands. All opposed? So that passes 11 to 1.
In favor?
Both students voting in favor of calling the question. The motion on the table is to pursue charter change language. It frees, it allows the district to go directly to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank using its own more favorable credit rating. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Um, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, that would be seven to five in favor. Actually, could I just see the hands at four?
Yeah, I think it would be.
Yeah. Yeah, for the motion. Ben, did you vote?
Not yet. I voted no earlier.
He thought he just won.
Oh, okay, you voted no, okay. Wait a second, can you just hold the hands up, please?
Uh, all in favor.
Two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six. I'm sorry, I had the vote wrong. All against, please raise your hand. I had the vote wrong, it is six, six. Which means that the, no, which means that.
Means it fails.
What?
Unless you're voting yourself in there.
I am, I am against.
Okay.
So which means the motion fails. Um, because it needs to have a quorum of which six, six is not a quorum. Okay, Keith, was there anything else from finance?
Can I just suggest that we engage in these conversations with city council? I mean, it's not a motion, but.
Right. I think that, yes, I would, yeah, I think that's valid to say, you know, at least broach the subject because we have asked if we can go to the bond bank.
I think I have been talking, Patrick, I do talk to city council about this. So I saw somebody came out as a, a loop.
No, I'm not, I just, I'm just, just to see how they would react to, to. I voted against because I just, I, I don't know how they would react to this and I don't know enough about it.
They probably wouldn't react very well.
I could just make a comment. It, it might be useful for the board to be aware of some facts about.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you use the microphone?
Yeah, one second, just a second, Keith, David, is it timely tonight? I mean, we are getting late, David, and that's, I hope we keep that light.
Just a simple comment. There's, there's a history in the last two or three years that I'm very familiar with, as recently as Monday this week, that the board might want to know about before they have these conversations with city council because there may be some disconnect in people's understanding of the facts. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of cost shifting, all sorts of things like that. I'll, I'll stop there. But if people don't want to hear the facts, they don't want to hear the facts.
Does it directly relate to bonding and to the interest rates of the bond?
I mean, if it relates to the overall relationship of the city, I don't think it's direct.
Finance and bonding, yes. It was suggested to me on Monday that we were out of bounds and needed to seek legal advice as a district if we were contemplating going for a tax anticipation note. The opinion, although it was qualified with, I'm not an attorney, this is Mr. Bob Rustin, who I have a very friendly relationship with, I don't have a hostile relationship, we just disagree with a lot of things. He indicated that he did not, he was not sure that we had legal authority to go for a tax anticipation note. Why is that important?
I'm sorry, could you just say what a tax anticipation note is?
A tax anticipation note is needed when a school district, or any other district, for a school district, you don't have enough cash to make, make payroll. Typically, you don't get tax payments from the city on July 1. You wait until the fall before you get your first tax payment, but you have salaries to pay. So you need to get, you need to get some money to cover your costs until taxes come in, until estate payments come in and so on. In order to, to do that, what, what the average school district, what the typical school district does in their mind is to take out a tax anticipation note. They quantify their cash flow through the year. They say in July or September, we're going to be a million dollars needed. And they go out to the bank and they get a loan. And every district that I've been in earns more money on their tax anticipation note than they pay. So it's a revenue source besides anything else. That's the second thing. The point we're coming to relative to this bond issue is, he, Mr. Rustin was suggesting that we didn't have that authority and needed to ensure that we had that. Why that's important is we're trying to implement what the state agency of education wrote to us in December last year, a year ago now, saying that we had to disaggregate our cash pool. If we disaggregate our cash pool, there will be times when the, the city has not paid us the taxes that, that we need to pay salaries in July and August and September, for example. And so this is the level of obstacles, shall we say, that are, that are part of this friendly collaborative relationship. And, and there are many other examples I can give you, but if you want to talk, just call it.
Liz?
So, um, it's, what I'm hearing is just this kind of history of bad relationships with the city. And, but what I don't understand is, um, why the rest of the board isn't acquainted with this. And it seems to me if there's, um, it seems to me we need a process in place, either for these issues to come to the finance committee and have, um, a full discussion, or we need some other kind of process in place to communicate with the city so that board members can be more effective in talking to our city councilors about what's going on. I mean, they're accountable to the city council in the same way you guys are accountable to the board. And if board members don't have any opportunity to talk to the city councils, then it's all going to remain at this level of frustration clearly for you. But, I mean, I don't feel like it's okay to come to the board and just kind of badmouth the city without any context and it just ends up being fear mongering. I just, I just feel like we don't clearly have a system in place for having these conversations with the city and having some kind of vetting process.
It, okay, we'll take that, you know, as a statement. I think that, what I will say, over time, the board has had, there are continual issues that do come up. Some of these things have been worked at the board level and through the administration, both with the city council and with the mayor's office, which would be the, you know, the board of finance. Um, and, you know, I, it was one of the reasons I was hesitant to have David make a comment at this point because I wasn't unsure if it related directly to the issue. And so I think that, um, you know, with these issues, I would ask, yeah. I would ask, I would ask, you know, David, that these are things that you do bring to finance committee because they should be handled both at the board level as well as at the administrative level.
They have been brought up in the finance committee.
Well, you could pass a resolution, the board could.
Yeah.
I think did.
Well, we have asked, we have asked them, right, and, and so I think what I would ask is that the finance committee take your, what you've just suggested, um, as an item to look at on their agenda. Policy. Linda?
Yes.
Committee report.
We have three policies that need to be reviewed by the board tonight. Um, at the last policy committee meeting, we, um, we, we took, took a look at 16 policies. These three are ready to be reviewed. There will be 13 more that have been referred to the city, to our attorney to give us a little okay on. And then we will be bringing those before you. You'll notice that we're changing the numbering and the policies will, the new policies will have a new number, numbering system. If there's an R after it, it means it's a required state policy. We really don't have any say in it, we just have to review it. So.
And just, yeah, the, the review policy, uh, process is simply, the policy and advocacy committee has looked at them, felt that the policy did not need change at the time. And mostly putting a review date on it recognizes that the board and the committee have looked at this within a certain amount of time.
And in fact, we can't change them, they're state polls, they're required state.
Yeah, they're required policies and we felt.
But the language, we could, we could play with the language on it.
If we do that, we would then end up rewriting the policy. We could rewrite the language, yeah. We don't have to, um, keep it exactly as is. That's not, that's not what it's doing yet. And so I guess what I would say here is I would ask that members, you know, hopefully have prepared and looked at these policies and if they had any concerns with the review, that would be the only concern to bring up to Linda. Keith?
Did you want a motion tonight to move?
You don't need a motion to review.
No, we just need to review.
Okay, you just, okay.
Then, um.
And they were put on. Yeah, because they are per review, yeah.
Yeah. Then the other thing you wanted me to wait and talk about.
Yes.
Was the legislative thing. We had the first, in, in conversation to begin the discussion about trying to get more money for English as a second language learners, part of the process is, I thought, was to, as an advocacy committee, um, start talking to legislators. So we had one legislative, uh, legislator from Heinsberg come in to our first, um, luncheon. All board members, by the way, are invited. The next one will be on Thursday, the 12th. Um, he was quite impressed. Um, it was Michael Yak, I don't remember.
Yan Tatchka.
Yak, okay. And he then sent out a, an email to all of the people on his legislative list serve saying what a great time he had, how he would recommend any legislator take advantage of the opportunity to come and have lunch. And our intent is to, um, help legislators see that Burlington's school, uh, school population looks vastly different than, say, Heinsberg or, um, the outlined areas. Uh, I know we have some coming, some legislators coming this Thursday.
What time would that be on Thursday?
12 o'clock.
And you end up just coming into here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They, they do not get gourmet cafe, they get right over where Keith is. We try to meet in the front lobby at noon. Yeah, and then they come in and get some lunch and they're joined, we're joined by whoever is available. In fact, this past time when we, uh, Michael came out of the food line faster than, than Jeannie and I did and he was very graciously invited to join a bunch of people who are food service employees for lunch. So we had a conversation with a woman from Russia and a woman, I believe, from Africa who are our food services.
And I guess you probably would, if, if any board members are coming, you'd like to know ahead of time if possible?
No.
No, okay.
Just show up at 12 o'clock. If you, if you miss us, come in here and find us.
When's the third one? Because I can't make it.
The 16th. The 16th.
Any questions for Linda, policy advocacy committee?
And, oh, and legislators that I've heard from that said they couldn't make it, I said, fine, give me a date that works for you. I'm not letting them off the hook, basically.
Questions or comments for Linda?
Is that Joey Donovan?
Nope. Has she called, responded? Nope. That's all right. Life gets more complicated.
Patrick?
We have minutes.
Okay. Anything to draw our attention to? Okay?
No good minutes.
Um, Bernie, infrastructure and technology.
Same thing, will the minutes be on next month? But, uh, a couple of things to look at in the agenda. One was the Victor's, uh, I guess, population planning, looking at some modeling for going forward in the next four or five years. And, and I, everybody should take a look at that because it's, it's very interesting and just sort of.
Yeah, quick comment on that. I think that was walked on. I don't see that those documents are actually online right now.
No, they're not.
Yeah, so if you could get those on, that'd be great because they, I, I agree with Bernie, they're.
They're really worth looking at. Ask me if I can do it right now while you're talking.
And, um, the other one was a report that Paul put together on, on busing, uh, just sort of comparing public transportation with the bus system and, and, so that, that's certainly worth reading and, um, taking forth. I think that's it. We had a discussion about St. Joseph's about the, that took up about half the meeting, about, uh, communication planning and that sort of thing, and that's going to be continued next month.
Any questions for Bernie?
Uh, totally lost myself here, I need to get back to our agenda.
Diversity. Thank you, diversity. Rebecca?
There are minutes, uh, specifically the Gantt chart, which has updates of, uh, net goals and progress on Jeannie's plan. And as you heard earlier, the equity and inclusion report advisory committee has been reconstituted and ended meeting on Thursday.
And you will be meeting Tuesday, is that right?
We are meeting Thursday before the budget hearing, next Thursday.
Yeah, okay, I knew that.
At 5:30 here. Budget hearings are here, yes.
Right, yeah, so you are meeting here as well at 5:30?
Correct.
Okay.
Rebecca, is the new committee the same members that we're in before or?
No.
How did you guys get to where you're at?
Um, the, Jeannie, would you like to speak to that in terms of the, the cri, you know, criteria sounds much different than what it was, but sort of, um, what qualifications the advisory committee should have in order to cover a, a good cross-reference? And then administration identifying some folks who have been on it before who are still interested and others who have, JD, as I believe is one of them as well, who has expressed interest. He's the, um, attorney from legal age, which has come to a number of meetings and has expressed a lot of interest in joining some of this work. But Jeannie, if you want to add?
So upon, um, the recommendation of the diversity equity committee, the full board accepted an amended charge this fall. And that charge included membership, which is the director of diversity and equity or designee, director of technology or designee, one or more district teachers, one or more board members, one of whom shall be a district equity committee member, which Liz has agreed to do, and community members that meet the following criteria. An individual who possesses knowledge and expertise in the area of research data. An individual who possesses knowledge and expertise in the area of research, data collection and analysis. An individual who is a recognized leader in advocating for equity inclusion of marginalized communities. And student participation may be considered, but shall be in addition to the above members, not substituted for one of them, including membership of a minority or marginalized community. In other words, we didn't, the board didn't want all that responsibility on a student's back. We also have learned, even talking with our own student reps, but students aren't particularly interested in this committee. We have attempted to get someone, we're still attempting to, but it says student participation may be considered. So that's in the charge.
Anything else for Rebecca? That's the final committee report. Is there a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Jill. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Regent.